Hello and welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop. We're happy that the Public Art Committee is here with us, yes, yes. And if all of you could introduce yourselves and then please proceed with the, with your presentation.
Okay, I'll start. We're delighted to be here to speak with you about Public Art Committee and our accomplishments and ongoing work. My name is Jacqueline Crusette. I am the staff liaison for this committee and my title with the city is Neighborhood Development Planner. And I'll pass it over to...
Gerald Walsh, L.A. Arts Representative.
Deanna Earhart, I'm the local artist in Lewiston.
Darby Ray, I live in Lewiston and I'm an arts advocate on this committee.
Courtney Schlochter, I live in Lewiston and I'm a citizen representative on this committee.
Shanti Deshane, I live in Lewiston, also a representative of this committee.
Shanti is with the Historic Preservation Review Board as well. A specific seat on our, on our committee. So, yes, this team of volunteers, staff and council, we also have Susan Longchamp as our council representative on the Public Art Committee. So we meet monthly at City Hall and serve to guide the city in its intentional support of art that is visually and physically available, accessible to everyone regardless of where you're from, what you have, or what you don't have. So we've already introduced ourselves, so now we're going to have Darby provide us with a historical context for this new committee.
So, I direct your attention to the slide over here, councilors, and, or behind you, that's right, you know, I just wanted you to glance at it. But what you're seeing on the screen, and this is just a small part of it, and I believe perhaps in your packet you have more, is a veritable explosion of public art in Lewiston. That explosion began with a grant from the Maine Arts Commission in 2019 that helped establish the Public Art Working Group. A joint committee of the cities of Lewiston and Auburn that commissioned the creation of two sculptures, one in each city. The hope at that time was to inspire the cities to invest in public art as a conduit for community, identity and pride, and as a driver of economic development. Specifically, the two cities were urged to create a standing public art committee, to adopt a public art plan, and to invest in public art through the budgetary process. Next came the Choice Neighborhoods Grant, which funded the creation of five more major sculptures and a remarkable mural on Chestnut Street. As the city's Public Art Committee, we are exceedingly proud that Lewiston has moved boldly to enact the recommendations of the original Public Art Working Group, as evidenced by the establishment of the standing committee currently sitting, sorry, by annual investments in public art through the budgetary process, and by the unanimous approval by a previous city council of a basic public art plan, which this committee will spend time in the coming year supplementing with additional guidance and process recommendations for your consideration. Thank you. Over to Gerald.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to comment on how exciting it's been as an arts organization to see this flourishing of the arts in our downtown. Lots of new inquiries from artists both of our local cities and abroad, you know, many from Portland, but even further, just expressing interest and, you know, gratitude that the city has taken this upon itself to embrace the arts. So we're seeing a lot of like, you know, fresh inquiries, how can I get involved, inquiries into the process for sure. And, you know, the album that I, that we put together is really just a snapshot, it's not complete, and it does incorporate pieces of the history, you know, before the Public Art Committee. So when this was a working group, you know, there'll be evidence of that history in this photo album as well. So in the insert that you got, there's a link to view it yourselves at your own time, and it includes some commentary from the community expressing appreciation. But I mostly wanted to comment on how, you know, it's been exciting to witness this engagement, you know, spark of creativity and people wanting to get involved.
As a local artist and a Lewiston resident, but also as an educator too, I've been involved in Lewiston Public Schools since I've lived here. But, you know, to see just the pride that our arts brings to our community, it also brings a value to our community as well. And I think the thing that is really telling about this is as time goes on, it'll also make us a destination spot too. You know, like Gerald was saying, we have inquiries from other artists wanting to come and participate in what we have happening here, but it is also another way for our own local artists to be able to be a part of this conversation. And it's exciting too, as from an educator's point of view, we've actually been able to bring some of the students in to be able to view some of the process as well. So the value is just enormous to be able to see this kind of art happening in our community.
I myself am an artist and I'm a downtown business owner, and I've seen a lot of support from the public and people who come downtown to shop, eat and drink. That public art has really brought them in and keeps them engaged with the art walks that happen during the summertime. Once a month, I get a huge influx of customers into my store. I have a secondhand bookstore. And I will frequently make the entirety of my rent payment at one night for art walk, which is pretty common for smaller stores like me on Lisbon Street. And also, the Wings Wall that was done by Melanie Tarian and some other artists have brought people into my store just by searching online. Wings are a really popular tourist sort of attraction when anyone is traveling. And that Wings Wall is directly adjacent to the building where my store is. People will see my name as one of the artists, and they come into the store to ask me questions and to spend money, and they tell their friends about it. And it's, the engagement is wonderful. And the recent traffic box projects has also brought a lot more traffic, foot traffic downtown. And people are coming into the stores because maybe they didn't know we had retail downtown. Maybe they didn't know about certain coffee shops or restaurants downtown. And if they're driving through to come show their friends and their children, the new traffic boxes, they will see these stores and they will stop in. I hear a lot of feedback from them regarding, oh, I came to see the art boxes and I didn't know you were here. And they come and they stay and they ask questions. I can direct them to all the other artwork in the city, and they do spend money while they're here. So the economic aspect of public art is also very much a huge favor to our city.
So, yes, we just wanted to, you know, speak, meet with you all as we are meant to do as part of the charter. This is the first time, I believe, the Public Art Committee has met with the city council, so we're pleased to do that and begin the dialogue with you all. And we want to thank you for your support because it's the city council that is leading this charge for a public arts initiative in our community to not only provide our community with a sense of place that belongs to us, of us, for us, but that we can share with others and draw others to our, our community. So, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Chidam.
Thank you all for being here and thank you for spearheading this vitally important aspect of cultural life in Lewiston. I'm pleased as heck to have you here. What's next on the agenda for you? What, do you have any big projects up in, in planning? Can you share with us what, what's coming down the pike?
Sure, well, Jared, would you like to speak to the, well, we have several, but would you like to speak to...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the Window Art Project was proposed as a way to bring some vitality to some of the unused storefronts and vacant windows, you know, to begin with. I feel like that's a good starting point and it could grow to include any, you know, standard kind of beautification project. So I kind of pitched some ideas about how I think window wraps could be used as a relatively, you know, inexpensive and, you know, lower commitment level, so we're not looking at 10 to 15 years or 20 years for a mural or the same for a sculpture, but something that could be sort of like rethought, reworked. You know, the invitation gets reopened each year or so, of course, in partnership with each business owner who's interested. So we did, and I can kind of draw your attention to the last few slides because this is where we left off before the, the weather kicked over. They're basically like large stickers that you can get die-cut to any shape, so sometimes they'll fill out the whole window, or they could be shape-specific. And these first batch are from CMCC, Central Maine Community College Design Students. And so for me, I'm, and I think some of the other members on our committee are really interested in engaging the youth, creating opportunities to engage youth, have their voice be elevated, uplifted in the community. And so this was really just like a trial to kind of iron out the kinks, figure out how much it was going to cost and see how far the project could go. And right now, we're basically in the process of like, what does the open call look like? How do we decide, you know, who, who goes up, ironing out the administrative aspect, the backend of it?
Yeah, working with the Economic and Community Development Team to identify those storefronts that are empty and that would be interested in having, you know, window wraps in their, in their storefronts and just, you know, beautifying, not having empty stores as you drive down the street, it helps.
Yeah. Well, just one more thing about it, I didn't think to put it in the slideshow, but, you know, places that are graffitied regularly, like bus stops, you know, those bus stations could be considered rather than having to rework the glass, you can just kind of, you know, even if it's temporary, cover it up. Yeah, what did you want to say, Darby?
Well, I was going to go in a different direction and say that another project that we'll be focusing on in 2025 is getting into some of the kind of technical aspects of process around, you know, developing forms for applying, for consideration of projects, processes for reviewing proposals, and, and those kinds of things. That was always intended to be done sort of later. The original city administrator who was in place when the Public Art Working Group was established suggested that because at the time, there was a thought that it might become a joint committee of the two cities, that we put forward simply a bare-bones sketch of what is public art, some definitions and some kind of intentions, but not a lot of specific process because that was going to have to be hammered out across the bridge. And Lewiston is just so much further ahead frankly on this, right, on this issue right now in terms of, you know, following through on, on those initial ideas, that it's time for Lewiston to just get into the weeds on the specifics because it's, it's time. And so that, that will be a major project for 2025 for us. So more arts in, you know, happening and being implemented, but also the process that's needed for the long term.
Counselor Chidam, did you have something else?
I'll follow up on that. Thank you for mentioning that, Ms. Ray. The, the forms and processes and procedures, I'm assuming, will be aesthetically designed instead of just standard formulaic administrative. When I was serving on the Historic Preservation Review Commission, we had some really inane arguments about the window wrappings and signs. And if a sign is on the outside of the window, then it becomes a sign and subject to code enforcement and permitting and so on, but if it's on the inside of the window, it's interior to the building. Are you going to address some inanities like that in your, in your discussions with the staff at city?
Well, we would certainly work with code, who have been probably...
Sorry, can you please speak into the mic?
We would certainly be working with code and planning department who may have, I believe, codes around signs have been updated perhaps since that discussion took place.
Right.
And they would certainly inform how we're moving forward here.
Okay, good, good. Thank you very much.
We don't want to work in a silo.
Great.
Counselor Nagin.
First, thank you all very much for the work you do in our community and for the projects that have happened. It's good to hear that there's going to be some type of formal construction around how people can engage with the Public Art Committee, because I think that that encourages more, more local folks to want to be able to participate in the process. One of the pieces that I'm curious about is, in the past, I believe, actually Bates College was hosting an RTIS map of all of our public art pieces. I don't think we do a particularly good job of promoting some of the pieces that we already have in place, so I would like to see possibly some more efforts to put out, you know, these are our public art pieces, and this is where they came from and the process in which they came about. One of the particularly trying periods of installation of public art in this community was from the Choice Neighborhoods Grant, where a lot of folks were under the impression that that was coming directly from the tax coffers here at City Hall. And so, you know, I think anything to be able to provide a better level of education for the public and also an understanding of where these, you know, where these pieces lie in our community, it's, Lewiston's, I always call Lewiston a small town, right? I did, I literally do, but depending on how you engage with the city, how you drive in, how you walk around, you can miss entire parts of the city. And so with, with the, you know, with this public art being installed in different places, hopefully it increases people's awareness of what's going on on the street next to them or two streets over as well. So again, thank you all very much. Glad to hear that we're getting organized around the processes to apply and also to bring people in. And, yeah, I would love to see just a bit more promotion around, maybe the city can help as well.
So I can comment on that, actually. Last year, we took out a couple ads in the Sun Journal as an organization with L.A. Arts to promote the public art map. So it had like a link and a scannable QR code, and it said, hey, did you know, like, that you can go to find out more about each of the public artworks? We also have had, we, since then, we've taken over the, the management of the app from the Bates students that started it. And I've had some interns and work-study students on managing it, which hasn't really proved to be sufficient. So one thing that will happen, we just hired a new administrative person who will help with the data, data management aspect of the, the map. One thing that has happened, and I could bring it up if you wanted to look at it, but sometimes there's partial information, so there'll be a photo, or there'll be information about the, one of the projects. What needs to be built out is having that more robust. So is it connected to Choice Neighborhoods? Is it something that the Public Art Working Group implemented, or is it official committee work, or is it another group like Street Arts for Maine? So, you know, part of it is about making sure that we have the right package of, you know, information to put up on the website before we just, you know. So that's kind of a process that we're working on as an organization. But then other ways that we, well, did you want to, did you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I think there are a lot of venues where a QR code to that map could be included. You know, a lot of chamber publications and other sorts of things maybe, you know, featured more prominently on city webpages, et cetera. So, you know, maybe it becomes a QR code that has some kind of Gerald-created or Deanna-created cool, like, brand, you know, around it or something. But I think it's an amazing resource, that map, and L.A. Arts taking it over and keeping it up to date is a really important contribution.
We've also talked about maybe having like public forums, so opportunities to learn more about the history and also projects that are coming down the line. And, you know, we haven't really like approved this yet, but like tours or, you know, having liaisons, people who are knowledgeable about it, who could give walking tours. You know, all of those things have been kind of on the table for ideas to pursue for projects in the coming year or years.
And there is already a recommended driving tour and biking tour and walking tour as a part of the interactive map that exists.
On the map, yeah.
That Bates students originally created. There's a lot more public artworks since they created it, but all the ones that the maps lead to still exist, so those maps are still completely relevant. But I, point taken that we need to promote the resources that, that do exist.
And just on that same level as well, I believe, how many organizations are currently involved in, in the arts recognized under any of the, any of the banners?
Oh, Arts and Culture Lewiston Auburn, ACLA?
Yeah.
Gerald?
There's more than a dozen, maybe as much as 15 or 16.
Okay. That, that's one piece, I think, that, that, you know, I don't know if it sits with the Public Art Committee, but promotion of the arts in general, right? Like, just again, getting the word out that there are all these different organizations that are doing work within the community, applying for grants.
And I don't know if you all get the email that sometimes says, what does it say? What, what, what to do in LA? It's the ACLA, the Arts and Culture Lewiston and Auburn email that comes out once a month that Gerald does the newsletter. And, you know, it's one of the best things. You just look at it and you're like, oh, every single week this month, I could do something. There's like vibrant arts and culture in this community, but, but not everybody gets that. And again, it's this issue of, you know, kind of access, but, sorry.
I think also, I was just going to say right quick, it's, it, there's the representation of what's happening here, but also the Lewiston Public Art Committee is represented on regional and statewide calls like the, you know, Maine Cultural Alliance, forgetting their acronym.
Cultural Alliance of Maine, CAM.
Yeah, CAM, that's it. So, you know, not only are we bringing people into Lewiston, but Lewiston is also going and being represented at the state and regional level as well. And people are excited about what's, what they're hearing about in our, in our city.
Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. In case you know, know I'm the shrooms guy, so now I'll cover that in a couple minutes. First of all, let you know that I think the art and what you're doing is great. My wife and I see it and comment it all the time, and I'm supporting what you're all doing. I do have a problem with that one piece. I still have a problem with it because if you Google it, it comes up drugs. You just said you want to engage youth and get them involved, well, a 10-year-old with a phone, and they all got them today, sitting there types it in, is going to see drugs. He's not going to see mushrooms, which is supposed to represent vegetables on that thing. So I'm still upset with that, especially seeing my mayor made fun of me by posting on Facebook, standing next to it. Okay, so I, you know, I would like to support you 110%, but you all need to figure this out. We have a drug problem in Lewiston. We have a kid drug problem. And young kids are going to do that. That's what kids do. They Google things. So you get a 10, 11-year-old, Google, and they're going, oh, we could eat some kind of mushrooms and do something. I have a big problem with that. Not with what other stuff you're doing, that one little piece. And a lot of your group, not maybe you guys, made fun of me and my wife on our Facebook page and different places, oh, 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 but I'm going to tell you, it's the truth. And I'll tell parents out there who are listening tonight, Google it. Get him to Google it tonight. The first thing that comes up is drugs, not mushrooms. And I went to a dozen restaurants and not one of them said shrooms on your pizza, not one. So I, no department stores, I mean, excuse me, supermarkets, nowhere. So I take big offense to that, and that's the reason why. The rest of the stuff you guys do is fantastic. The trail, the walking, having somebody like to do in Portland, walk people around and talk about different things, I think it's fantastic. But I think it should be policed to a point where you need to think about our youth. Not yourself, not your self-image, what you all think is cool, but maybe our youth and what it might be producing to them. So, thank you.
Yes.
Speak to that.
Yeah, can we, no, yes, can we speak to the, to the process? Absolutely.
Counselor, just so you know, when that piece was done, the word on it was mushies, and the artist was just referring to cooking, so we didn't think that it was anything that was negative towards the youth, just so you know that, because just as us as parents here and even educators, we are very conscious of everything you say and we agree with you. So I just want you to know that we were very conscious of that, like, as far as the shrooms part, I don't remember that being on the box, but...
Well, either one you type in, it comes up the same.
Right.
Either word brings you the same road.
But what I was trying to say is like, it was really about cooking with mushrooms and like, in a kitchen kind of setting, and so that's why we thought it was okay. So, you know, again, your point well taken.
Still, no, still, it's still up there.
Counselor, can we, Counselor, you have not been recognized, thank you.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Yeah, of course. I have two children. They are 11 and 17 years old. They are always online because a lot of their schoolwork is online. They use YouTube as tutorials for drawing, for doing makeup, styling their hair. And as their mother, I also am very conscious of what they're doing online, what they're searching for. And when that, when that box went up and I saw the word mushies, the first thing I thought of was youth culture who are using the word mushies as a colloquial, colloquial and familiar term for mushrooms as part of, part of the cottage core aesthetic, which is very popular among the youth right now. And it's, it's actually for any age. If you Google or put in a hashtag on any social media cottage core, you're going to see mushroom art on everything. And it's just about the forest and moss, what grows in the forest, people who are foraging, which is something that's very, very relevant right now as far as people kind of going back to the earth and not relying on food chain sources within, you know, the United States and importing. So I just want to point that out because from my perspective as a parent, I never looked at it and thought of drugs, because as far as I know, people aren't using that word mushies for drugs specifically. I have only heard the word shrooms when people are talking about it, or magic mushrooms. And you're right that you're not going to see the word mushies or shrooms on a menu, but as far as social media goes, which is a huge part of almost everyone's life, but especially young people, when they Google mushrooms or mushies, they're looking for cottage core, they're looking for all of the natural earth tones and jewel tones, and they just, they want to dress in pretty layers of skirts and aprons and cardigans. And that, I absolutely understand that some people do use that word for drugs. And as Deanna said, the artist who made that had a kitchen theme in mind. She also has radishes and other things on it. And I know that your problem is with the word itself, but I would like all to consider other ways to use that word and what it was intended for by the artist.
Counselor, I'm going to let everyone respond who wants to, and then we'll come back to you.
So I just wanted to comment on the foraging aspect of it. I know the artist was trying to make a statement about like food insecurity specifically. So having worked in the food industry, being underpaid as a food worker, you know, trying to make it work however you can. So I think to just kind of reiterate Courtney's point, like, context defines meaning. And so for the artist, like, if there's a question that is as, you know, volatile as something like this, it's really important to try to get perspective from the, from the creator and the intent, and to listen and trust that. And that's actually where the learning opportunity is, I think, for youth. And cottage core is like right on, I mean, gaming culture, you know, there's so... And cottage core is like, right on, I mean, gaming culture, you know, there's so many ways in which mushrooms are dangling off of students' backpacks, you know, and that goes back to like, the eighties, you know, with gaming.
Mario.
Mario, yeah. You know, and so it's, I think, as an artist and as an arts educator, I wanted to comment on context and the artist's own perspective.
I don't, I think the only thing that I would add is that, I think that the conversation, while really frustrating, I think, to you or concerning, I think actually the conversation that your concerns have sparked is precisely what public art is designed to do, which is to, you know, invite conversation and conversations about different interpretations of what the artist was going for, or how it's being received. I do think the context is really important, and it could be that, again, we're not here to solve this particular issue tonight, and I'm not on any social media, so I haven't seen all the stuff that's come your way, and I'm sorry that you've been insulted and made fun of. But I do think, you know, maybe in this, I mean, one thing you can do is simply make the context more apparent, like, so maybe a QR code gets added, and, you know, so that there's an artist's statement that's easy to see, or something, I don't know. Again, not to problem solve, but just to say that art is sometimes controversial. It is multivalent, it invites multiple interpretations, and it seeds discussion. Again, that's not necessarily the answer to what you're putting on the table, but I do want to say that those are all functions of art, and those, that's, those are part of the reasons that we love art in communities, because it brings people together, not because everybody has the same interpretation of a piece of art, but because the art invites interpretations and interactions from all different kinds of people. And that's, that's a really important function.
Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for my disruption earlier. First, I congratulate you on being a good mother. And if there were more of you out there, I wouldn't probably have to worry about talking about the subject, quite frankly. And that's my concern, having polled some teachers about that, who talk to ten, eleven-year-olds who don't know what that word means, and the only way they can figure it out is by Googling it. So if you don't have a campaign at that level, or the level that might attract somebody, then what you're saying is, very smart and bright individuals here, you know, you're a percentage of our community. You're not the community. So that's where my concern comes from, as well as the fact I have a degree in drug and alcohol addiction, so I know, down the street in view of that, is a house that holds people with drug and alcohol addictions, and they're familiar with that word. So that's where I come from. It wasn't about, you know, the whole big blown-up thing that it ended up being, simply is, we need to think about that when we're in our community. We're gonna have pictures of needles laying over the grass? That's commonly what it looks like out here in the park? Are you gonna reflect that as a norm? Because you all think it's art? I don't think that's art, I mean personally. So my point being is made on that particular item was that. And people making fun of it really bothered me, because they obviously have no clue about the drug and alcohol, especially drug problems we have right here. We're fighting it right now with needles, and figuring out what we're gonna do with that problem. That's where I came from. The rest of your stuff looks outstanding, and it wasn't meant to be at any one in particular person. Okay, but it's just the concepts, concept for me, that you're all very bright, and you probably have bright kids, and you deal with bright individuals in art, but you don't have every student in art when you're in there. You only have a small fraction mostly of kids who go through, who are gonna see that kind of work, and get a chance. And I wish we had better art, and music in our high school, and our middle school, and our elementary school. Okay, I think it's a big need out there that we just can't fund, unfortunately, because the state won't get on board. But that's where I come from. And I'm very passionate, yes, if you've seen me enough on here, you know the certain things I pick on, and I run with, and that's one of them. And as long as it sits there, every chance I get, I'm gonna bring it up as something I dislike. Thank you. And you all did a great job tonight, by the way.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here. What you've done is great. I really enjoy the art. You have some very talented artists out there, very talented, and I'm looking forward to more, more art from everybody, so, thank you very much.
Further questions or comments from the council? Anything else further that anybody would like to add?
Thank you very much. We look forward to talking with you again, and presenting, me being at some ribbon cuttings in the future.
Sounds wonderful. Each of you are leaders in your own right, and I, we are honored by your service on the Public Art Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you're probably a little ways up, I think a maple cord. It's...
Okay. That would've been funny.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you're good.
So you know what you sent me, I sent everyone?
Hold on, we're on mic.
So just so you know that, they all got a copy too.
Okay.
And we're, now we're kicking off our second workshop. George Libby, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Nate Libby. I am Assistant Director of Economic and Community Development. I'm returning for a second workshop here to talk about the New England Clean Energy Connect project, and consideration of creating a TIF district to help shelter the new valuation and put some of that tax revenue to good purposes, as well as for tax relief. So, what I've prepared is a very brief version of the slideshow you saw last week. A couple of slides are refreshers for yourselves, as well as people at home, and then I've laid out some scenarios that you've requested. NECEC stands for New England Clean Energy Connect. This is the so-called CMP corridor that's bringing power from Canada through western Maine into Lewiston, and it's in Lewiston where that Canadian hydropower connects to the New England grid. Lewiston's interest here is the converter station, that's made up of four transformers. These devices take that direct current power and convert it to alternating current power, which can be used to power our homes. This station and all of its ancillary equipment is estimated to be assessed at $340 million when it's completed. This project is being built over a period of years, and so as phases of the project are completed, the city assessor sort of makes an assessment of the value of that property, and we capture that value on April 1st of every year. So, to date, we've got 186.5 million of the project's value is currently recorded on our tax rolls. Taxes generated from that value, we're supporting the general fund, and those tax revenues are then supporting all of the services that we have here, from police department to fire department, and the like. What we're considering is what we might do with the remaining amount of money and value that's gonna come online over the next two years, which is about $160 million over two phases. These numbers are slightly different than the numbers presented at our workshop a couple of weeks ago. I was able to get clarification from the city assessor on the current value, 186.5 million is the current value of the project. Last we spoke, I said it was 172, so the value has gone up. This is the same table that shows you how much revenue could be captured in a TIF, and what that impact has on general purpose education, revenue sharing, and the county tax. These numbers have been adjusted to reflect that correction that I just described in the last slide. Basically, the result here is the, on the far left-hand corner, the dollar amount going into the general fund is higher than what I shared with you two weeks ago, four weeks ago, rather, and the funds available for sheltering and for TIF are slightly, slightly The green highlighted slides, 30% and 40% sheltering, this is the staff recommendation. I think it remains the staff recommendation. We've had a series of conversations internally since our workshop. We've accepted your feedback for what you'd like to see the TIF funds be used for, I think, and staff can certainly speak to this, 70% is probably pushing it too high. It's gonna create pressures on your general fund budget discussions in the spring. There needs to be at least some new valuation captured by the general fund to pay for all of those things that are, that are going up in cost, from personnel to insurance, all of those things. I think we're, as a staff, gonna strongly recommend you not go up to that high level. I think our recommendation remains at, you know, around 40%. I'll talk about some other scenarios as well. The first recommendation's at 30%, and it basically takes a portion of staff salaries, moves a little bit more over to the TIF, and creates a little bit of savings on the general fund, which you could use to provide property tax relief or fund expenses through the regular course of your budget process. The 40% proposal is roughly the same as before as well. This has the addition of some more staff salaries, and the business development fund that was funded out of the general fund last year could come over to the TIF and relieve some of that pressure on the general fund. Council requests of a scenario at 50%. This transfers additional municipal salaries over to the general fund, and funds one and a half million of LCIP projects with TIF funds. This is a request we heard from you all a few weeks ago. This version at 60% does more of the same, transfers even more municipal salaries off of the general fund and into the TIF, and funds up to 3 million of LCI projects with TIF funds through a bond. And then the final slide shows a version at 70%, which is roughly the same as 60% version, but includes a program for economic development that is detailed here. But basically, in a very high level, the first line is capitalizing a business storefront and facade improvement program. We obviously would desire to have some flexible funds to provide matching grants to business owners to spruce up their storefronts and make our major corridors more attractive for residents and visitors to come through. Another allocation is for a marketing campaign to advertise this community as a destination for business, arts, and recreation. We're thinking of primary market being southern Maine, and a broader market being the New England states. And then the last two allocations are to support economic development enterprises outside of the city. One would be LA Arts, which currently receives a $35,000 a year TIF allocation. We'd like to see that continue. As well, the Downtown Lewiston Association is gearing up to take on its next phase of the work it's engaged in. Municipal support of that organization could help the Downtown Lewiston Association leverage additional funds through corporate sponsorships, grants, and the like. Part of my task leaving the workshop a few weeks ago was to come back to you with a list of potential projects in the LCIP that could be funded with TIF funds, and so I've created a list here with references to the FY25 LCIP. The FY26 LCIP is still in progress, but as you'll know, this is a five-year plan, so most of the projects here are taken from the second year of this plan. I've broken them up into a few different categories. The first was, I would say, the clearest tie to economic development activities, as well as the council requests that I received. That totals about 2 million in projects. The second bucket, I guess, would be a second tier, they're large projects, they're rough estimates, but those have a clear tie to economic development, and those were scheduled for FY27. And then the final grouping is really just an effort to give you a sense of what the possibilities might be. The devil's into details here, I think, if we're to pursue any of these projects and funding them with TIF, I think step one would be refining the scope of each one of these projects. Step two would be making sure they line up with the statute for how these funds should be used. And then number three, I think, all of this discussion about funding LCIP projects really should take place in the context of your general fund budget. I think the, you know, the idea that we'll select projects here in December, before you've really tackled what's coming in the spring with your general fund budget, might be putting the cart before the horse. And so I think we are offering this as illustrative, not necessarily something that needs to be decided today, but it potentially helps you answer the question of using TIF funds to support one-time capital projects. So that represents my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer questions, and welcome your interest in this topic.
Thank you, and thanks for preparing this. Counselor Najin.
Assistant Director Libby, thank you very much for the different options here. I've heard several concerns about the way that TIFs would be used overall, and, you know, having the outline of some of the capital improvement projects is helpful. I think I've had some folks reach out and advocate that the entire amount should go into our general fund, and then shift that either to tax abatement and/or to the school system. I've heard that argument from somewhere between four and five people, either a combination of those, or, you know, all at once. My concern, and I think I named this before, was the capital improvement projects, as well as the regular fund pieces that we can reduce the budget by, by putting this into, some of these pieces into TIF, as well as not reducing our state share in revenue sharing around the school system in particular. I think there are still a couple of things we're not 100% clear on for what type of funding we'll be receiving for the schools next year, but I can't say that the last budget process was harrowing, I think is a good term for it. And I want to make sure that we're approaching this knowing that there is money that we will have to allocate for the schools, and there is money that we need to budget for the city. And any way that we move should be a reduction in our overall budget costs, you know. That is my major concern, is that, you know, we assign some of this in TIF fashion, where it doesn't either reduce the tax base, or one piece that I've mentioned before, I think it's important to, create new revenue streams, you know, one or the other, or both, preferably. So I appreciate what's been put before us. I do have a question. When do we have to make the decision on if we're approving a TIF zone, or a TIF program? And so I just want to know what the window is. I think it was March, you were saying, right?
I would like to bring a package to you at your second meeting in January for your review and approval, so that staff have enough time to prepare the material, to submit the full application to the state of Maine DECD.
And just to clarify, because we were asked this via email.
Yeah.
If we set, let's say we set our TIF deferment at 40%, right, or 50%, and we decide to basically taper that down over time, do we have the flexibility to do that, or do we have to name it in advance?
We have the flexibility to do that. I think it's helpful to name it in advance, so that our modeling can be dialed in.
So we're not expecting...
If we expect to shelter 40%, and then we plan after five years to bring it down to 30%, I think we should name that in the application. There's a process to roll that back. Sheltering more than what you said you were going to shelter requires an amendment process, but sheltering less does not. It's a simpler paperwork exercise. But to your first question, March 1st is a deadline for us to submit an application to the state. I'd prefer not to drive this up to the last minute. I'd really prefer a direction tonight, so we can prepare a package for you, second week of, second meeting in January, and go through that process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Administrator O'Malley, can you tell us when the second meeting in January is?
21st.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Libby, thank you. I'd like to go back to Tier Three. We talked about that a month ago. Hardly seems that it was four weeks ago, but I guess it was. There are costs that the city incurs that are not eligible at all for tax increment fin...
Administrator O'Malley, can you tell us when the second meeting in January is?
21st.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Libby, thank you. I'd like to go back to Tier Three. We talked about that a month ago. Hardly seems that it was four weeks ago, but I guess it was. There are costs that the city incurs that are not eligible at all for tax increment financing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is it the state DECD that makes the determination on whether a project or a funding is appropriate for tax increment? Is that the arbiting authority?
Yes, and at time of application, that's the primary point of the state making those determinations for us. The application is filed, staff go through a collaborative process review, we come to an agreement, and then the municipality's sort of off into the races in terms of running the program.
All right, so without naming any specific projects, we have a bucket of Tier Three expenditures already, and things that are in the pipeline that we're going to be seeing in January with the capital improvements plan. My limited understanding of this is that we can take the money from NICAC and put it in the general fund. That's zero TIF. We could put all in the general fund and spend it that way, in which case, we are a richer community and we see less support from the state.
Correct.
That's the sheltering aspect.
Correct.
That suggests to me that we fund all of our Tier Three projects, to the extent that the money's available, with TIF money, and that we taper that down in a planned and consistent way, so that we don't fall off the cliff that we were talking about last night, or...
Last month.
Recently, with the expiration of the Walmart TIF. And if that can be planned out, I know we only have a five-year capital plan, and this is a 30-year TIF, right?
Correct.
So, my basic question is, if we can put the money in either the general fund or a TIF fund, which has limited expenditure, there are limitations on the expenditure, why would we not put as much as we can in the sheltered aspect to offload the demand on the taxpayer?
That's a great question. I think if the projects that I listed on the screen that are in this document were fully funded today by the general fund, then I would say, yes, Counselor Chittam, let's put all of these projects in the TIF. But today, most of the projects in this document are not funded. You all are going to have to figure out what among these projects you're going to select. It could be 10% of the projects here, it could be 20%, but it's not going to be 100%. And you're going to need to figure out how to pay for those projects and the bonds if you have to take them out. And so, what I think we're saying here is, in principle, you are correct. We want to move as many of these expenses as we can into the TIF, but we don't want to give you the false sense that these projects are programmed in, and we're going to create savings for the taxpayer by taking them out of here and funding them with a TIF, because today, you haven't decided what in FY '25, '26, '27 you can fund. Does that make sense?
It does, and I thought I prefaced my remarks by saying that we have this amorphous list of projects we don't know yet. So I think, in principle, I'm still in favor of the idea of sheltering as much as possible. I would like to also ask, none of the costs of bonding and the interest in a debt service, the interest service on these projects, has been factored into your calculations on possible expenditures of the TIF? Is that right?
I included cost of borrowing in these scenarios.
So the interest rates are included in those? Okay.
Well, I estimated 5%. We know nothing about what the market's going to do tomorrow, but...
You don't!
But our best guess was 5% for a municipal bond, for a municipal bond from an exceptionally well-rated institution like ours.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
Yes, all right, I appreciate those answers. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with bond. Are you saying that we would bond $2 billion to take care of projects and pay monthly out of the TIF, or yearly out of the TIF? That's, is that, as I read and hear what you're saying?
Sure, Counselor. I recall last month, we were talking about maybe capturing a lot in the beginning, funding some projects right out of the account. I also described that sometimes you'll need to wait to allow funds to accrue. That's certainly a way to do it. I think, for the purposes of this exercise, I was looking at large lists of projects and trying to wrap my head, how can I present this in a way that's going to make some sense and is relatively easy to digest? And so, taking out a low-cost bond and selecting the projects and funding that debt was a way forward. But certainly, the other scenario I described last month is a way forward, too.
So the bond would obviously be less than 30 years, because that's the life of what we have to deal with. So I'd like to direct this to Director Roy, if I could. Is a bond a good idea or a bad idea to do projects?
So, we don't bond usually for 30 years. Most of our bonds are, the longest is 20 years. You never want to bond longer than what an asset is going to be valued at, because you're basically paying for something that's already depreciated fully. So we don't usually bond 30 years. My concern with what Counselor Chittam said about why wouldn't we shelter all of it, we only receive 50 cents on the dollar, technically, from the state for that. So you have to remember that anything, if you shelter that portion, as I gave you those spreadsheets, it shows that the taxpayer is going to pay unless you cut services, because with the salaries and benefits alone, as I put on that, all those tax rate adjustments, that's not including utility increases or any other increases, rental increases, just wages and salaries. If you shelter up to the 70%, people will see an increase of $3.32 on the tax rate, without touching anything but salaries and benefits. And again, this is an estimate. We did a quick estimate, because we haven't started that process. I asked school for a quick estimate, so it might even come in higher than that. We have 22 vacancies, so we took those at step one. I know I didn't calculate in Deputy Director Libby's expense that he plans on pulling out for salaries of the $440,000 because of that issue where those vacancies are estimated to be hired at, like, step one. So in reality, usually, people are not hired at step one. So that's why I did not subtract that amount out when I did the calculations. So if you shelter all of that, you have to remember that start of the budget, you're already going to have an issue if you do not want to increase the tax rate. You're already going to have to look at cutting. So I just want to make that clear, that will happen.
Follow-up, if I could, Mayor?
Please, continue.
So, follow-up first would be to the director. So if we didn't take any of the money, what happens based on your scenario right here for next year?
So I did 70%, 60%, and 40%, because that's what everybody was discussing two weeks ago during the meeting. So just at the 40% with the estimated valuation from the assessor, if you shelter that, the increase is $3.25, just starting off at the gate for just the wages and benefits. Like I said, that's not including any utility increases, CMP, fuel, oil, none of that is calculated in here. It was just to give you an idea of where you're going to be starting at with just those increases that are in the salary and wages. And below, you'll see, I took the assessed value, the average home of $120,000. That would be an additional $372 a year annually for their taxes.
But you didn't do it at zero. In other words, we gave you all of the money, would the taxpayers save any money? That's my curiosity point, because people are asking me that. If we don't take anything, do I flatline my taxes based on, you know, hypothetically, the things you talked about? Would we still, are we still going to see some kind of a jump?
Right, so I'd have to redo that, because I put in the calculations of the revenue we would receive if we sheltered a portion, so that would have to be removed out, and then the full valuation would have to be in that. And I can do that up and email that out to all of you.
A curiosity question. This is for Director Libby. You talked about we could amend it to the point of increasing later if we wanted to. So I guess my question comes, how does that affect the state as far as the rules go? So if we say this year, we're not going to take any TIF money, because we need it all, but next year, we want to do 30, because we have a couple of more TIFs show up, and we have a couple of projects pending that may show up, that would offset some of the loss in revenue, will the state allow us to go backwards if we need to in order to shelter some things? Or once you get to a, you know, you're worth $100, and now you want to tell me you're worth 90? Well, last year, you were worth 100, why are you only worth 90? I mean, how do the rules work that way?
That's a good question, Counselor. I'm not sure how DECD would react. I could ask. I don't have the answer off the top of my head. We would be asking for, to create a TIF this year, but to not have it go into effect until next year. It rubs up a bit against these rules around capturing value and the timing of when valuation is captured and that sort of thing. So I don't know what the answer would be. I do want to offer as well, in Director Roy's analysis, which I think gives you a sense of, you know, what happens when you double the size of the sheltering effect. You know, it's about 7 cents on the mill rate, according to these calculations, but Counselor Roy did a good job of putting in a lot of variables here for you to consider. There are more variables still that are hard to model, which is, if you shelter nothing, how is that going to affect the revenue line for the schools? If you shelter all of it, how's that going to affect the revenue line for the schools? It's almost like you're squeezing a balloon, and there's a lot shifting here. This at least gives you a sense of some of those dynamics, just on the expense side and the general fund.
Counselor Glant, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. So unfortunately, the public didn't get a copy of your great spreadsheet of all the current TIFs that are out there, but I had a question on that. Because a lot of the salaries for your department are covered in the TIF. Is there not enough money in the current TIFs to pay your salaries next year? That's my question would be, if I read this correctly, is $900,000 coming in next year in TIFs? Almost a million?
I think the reserve account probably would not be enough to cover the salaries for the TIF-funded positions for next year.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm just trying to balance this through my thought process. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Further comment, Counselor Nagy.
So I guess my direction would be, and obviously, there's going to be different opinions on this, right? But my direction would be, ultimately, we would want to see LCIP projects that are a must included, positions that would normally be funded by the general fund included. And I think that there would also be a value to seeing some calculations around if we put all of it in the general fund, what exactly that does, both from Director Roy's numbers, and then also from what that would happen with the school system. Because ultimately, I'm of the opinion that the higher the valuation, the less revenue sharing we're going to get, but I think there's a balance there, in which possibly, the benefit to the tax base might be healthy enough to support the loss in revenues from revenue sharing. And I'm not 100% sure on that, so I want to see the numbers, so that I can make a decision on that. But yeah, basically, reducing the overall cost of our budget for the next 30 years for positions that we know we have to fund, and projects that we would normally have to bond for, would be my argument.
So Counselor, for clarification, we presented recommendations at 30 and 40. We heard at the workshop, you wanted to see 60 and 70. Are you saying you want to see zero? Is that what you're asking?
I just want to see the numbers on it, that's all. So ultimately, I think we can get that in advance, both from Director Roy and from your calculations with what you believe the revenue sharing calculations will be. Just so we have it, because people are asking for it, and I think it is a relevant question, you know. And I'm also in favor, if we have many LCIP projects that we're all agreeing on, of possibly taking a larger amount and then scaling it down, so. But I think that we won't be able to make those decisions until we actually get into the budget season, so.
Counselor Hyman.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Nagy. I'm just looking at the list of LCIP projects that you included in the packet there, and I think that this upcoming budget is going to be fairly difficult and tight. The only one, the only project on there that I would say is absolutely necessary is probably the warming center and homeless shelter funding, because we know that's going to happen anyway. And then, also, of course, the salaries that are currently being paid with TIF funds. Other than that, I think we would have to, we'd have to make a decision on those when that comes up. But seeing the fairly small difference between the, you know, even between 70% and 40% from these calculations, as far as the change to the tax rate, I mean, I realize there's got to be a balance in there somewhere. I think somewhere in that range is the right spot. I don't know exactly what it is right now.
Counselor Sewell.
So I'm still in favor of the staff recommendations. It just, not knowing what's coming is not something that I really want to gamble with, so I'm still good with the 40%.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, I've heard a lot of good argument both ways. You know, it makes a lot of sense to go with people that kind of know what's going on. I'm looking at, you know, less than 40. I'd like to see the numbers on zero. I want to see what that is. Anything we can do to reduce the tax for everybody is what I'm looking at, so, sort of in favor of.
Back to you, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. To follow up on Counselor Roy's comment, if we take no TIF at all, then the salaries and wages that are currently being paid with the Walmart TIF, which will not be here next year, would suddenly be added to the general fund. So that, taking zero TIF, doesn't work in that sense. Is my understanding correct there, that taking zero, not having a TIF at all on a remaining project, would adversely affect us in a couple of ways? One, it would put all of the burden of the expenses that are currently being borne by tax increment financing directly onto the general fund, and two, it would increase the valuation of the city by $182 million over the next two or three years, which adversely affects then our ability to get money from Augusta.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So to expand on that, I am looking at the chart that has the two lines highlighted in green, and that's included in your packet. Oh, it's up on the screen now. I'm looking at 50%. The 50% TIF, and that's us 4.9 million. And just by a quick back of the envelope, I can tell you that if we did no TIF, we're going to get hit with a $1 million combined cut for school funding and revenue sharing. So we're going to have a $1 million combined cut from that action. 50% versus zero. As well, to Counselor Chittam's point, the Economic Development Department, which is funded outside of the general fund currently, is going to come into the general fund. So that's going to be around the salary fringe and the like, half a million. So, that's, as you're heading into this budget cycle, you're going to add those two factors onto your conversation if we did a 0% TIF, or did no TIF, rather.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Clear as mud. I guess what I would like to know, and probably Director Roy would have some of these answers, is what is your total economic development budget for staffing that's being paid for by Walmart? Because I see you have, coming in still, if I'm reading the paperwork you sent me correctly, somewhere between about almost $1 million, okay? 908. So, you know, if Walmart disappears next year, you're still going to have your salary, because I don't think your department has a $1 million salary budget. Could be, I'm not sure, but I'm thinking that, plus some of the programs, I'm sure, funded out of that as well. I do understand that.
So current year's about $511,000, that's salary and fringe for multiple positions, and then there's a few other non-EDD positions, so it's... for multiple positions, and then there's a few other non-ECD positions, so it's about five hundred and sixty-three. That's your salary and fringe, that's not office expense.
Right. And the other question I would have is to find out from the state, if in fact, we decide to go with zero, and I'm not a zero fan, I think something has to be TIFed in this process, what happens in reverse? If we do zero this year, maybe even zero next year, and then we decide to bump it to thirty or to forty, because we've gotten some of these developments that right now are low-hanging fruit, that once they kick in, we'll start seeing some money that might offset that, is I'd like to know, do they go back and say, well, nope, your evaluation was one hundred and eighty-six million dollars more, and it's always going to be that even if you TIF now? I would like to know that. Or if they say, nope, because you TIFed it, we'll drop it off, back down to, like you don't have it there, that would be important for me to understand, make my decision on how to go forward, if that makes sense. Director Roy's got a hint? Can I, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
So currently...
Director Roy, please.
Currently estimated that we'll end with eight hundred thousand in the TIF. So it would cover fiscal year twenty-six. However, as Deputy Director Libby mentioned, this has to go to the state by a certain date. If we do not get this done before April first and approved from them, not just sent to them, then you're looking at, you cannot shelter this, I believe, Nate, after it's been put in the general fund. So that's my fear, is if no amounts are sheltered, you're going to have to put that full economic development right in the general fund come at least fiscal year twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you. To be clear, I did not say I'm in favor of zero.
Oh, I didn't say that.
No, no, I know you didn't say that. I just want to see what the numbers are at zero, because I've got down to twenty percent. I wanted to make an educated decision here, and I want to see all the numbers lower than twenty. Thank you.
Counselor Nagy.
So, a couple of pieces, and again, I want to reiterate, reducing the overall general fund expenditures should give a benefit to the taxpayer, right? Like, we're delivering a value to the taxpayer by reducing the overall general fund expenditures. Also, I would like to highlight that when we're talking about funding the shelter from TIF funding, that could be used for other municipal sources, worse service provider community, and there is a huge amount of responsibility that sits with the federal government, the state, the county, and our surrounding communities in order to support the shelter that is city-directed. And so, at the end of the day, I do not want it to be a situation where Lewiston carries the flag alone on this. I think that that would be detrimental to our entire community, and I just want to make a public statement on that, because it's not just our burden to carry. We're providing the solution, 100%, but we should not be providing the full funding mechanism for the shelter. And so, in conclusion, I think there's more work that needs to be done on this before you can put this before us two weeks into January. I don't know if we can do it in a workshop, I don't know if there's another mechanism in which we can actually have a discussion that's outside of this thing, so.
One second, Counselor Glenn. Assistant Director Libby, I have a question. So you needed to know by the twenty-seventh to prep the application by March first, right? And not, like, down to the wire?
The rules governing TIF programs require that applications be submitted by March first.
Right.
So for me to get an application in that is of the quality that we all expect, we do need to work backwards from that date. So if, for example, you invite me to a workshop on January seventh, then I think we need to make a decision on January seventh, to give my staff the time to prepare the material, work with the attorney, do the financial analysis, to meet that March first deadline.
Yeah, and that was my question, if we met again on the seventh, would that give you enough time?
Yes, but we really cannot push it past the seventh. Seventh has to be the decision point.
Understood.
If folks can be willing to work with us on that date.
Administrator O'Malley, at that point, we probably would not have a workshop item and just simply make it an agenda item, correct?
You would have a workshop on the seventh, and then we could vote on the twenty-first, or you folks could vote on the twenty-first. But we need direction, as Deputy Director Libby is saying, we need a direction, you know? Do we want to go with forty, do we want to go with fifty, sixty? What do you want to do? That's what we need from you. So if we could get somewhat of a consensus at a workshop, but then you actually would vote on it at a city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Sewell.
Does it need to be a workshop? If it's going to, if we can put it on the agenda for the seventh, can't we just have a discussion during the agenda item?
We won't know what to put on the agenda if we don't know what a percentage is. I guess if we want to put it on the agenda without a percentage, but then that's difficult for staff to prepare the documentation.
So can we all get a general, like, a number before you leave, before we leave? I know somebody, I know some want more information, but this is the second workshop, and I understand it's important, but can we all just maybe yell out a number, so he just has an idea, instead of, we're all just kind of staring at him? So I'm good at forty percent. So that's, I just feel like we're going nowhere right now.
Thank you, Counselor Sewell. No, anything else?
No, that's it.
So Counselors, at least several of you feel that we need a little bit more information. Counselor Harmon.
I was just going to follow Counselor Sewell's lead, and I'm going to go with fifty percent.
Counselor Nagy.
I would be supportive of the fifty percent position as well, knowing that we can reduce that over time, and I would suggest that we do. And this is, again, ballpark, because I do want to see those numbers, and I also want to see what parts of the LCIP we actually can spend this money on that is crucial to us for the next budget season.
So just to be, to Counselor Sewell's point, Counselors, just to be clear, are we thinking that we're going to send Assistant Director Libby back with a number, or we would like a workshop on the seventh? Counselor Glenn, and then Counselor Chittam.
I prefer a workshop.
What he said.
And I understand that we need to make a decision, Assistant Director Libby, but you're, Counselor Roy, did you have something? But we could, if we could give you a clear direction on the seventh during that workshop, like, you could make that work for the next council meeting on the, what would that be, Counselor, I'm sorry, Administrator O'Malley?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yes.
Sure. Happy to come back on the seventh and have another workshop. I want you folks to be aware that I think we'll have four days from that workshop to publish the public notice, and then I think I'll have a day or two more to publish the full packet. So if we're going to come together on the seventh, I'm recommending we decide on something close to what we've presented in these options. I can also provide additional information to you by email between now and the workshop on the seventh. It sounds like folks are willing to make a decision on January seventh, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Yes, to help you, Director Libby, you've heard forty percent, fifty percent, I'm going to throw sixty percent. That narrows the window a little bit from a hundred to zero, so that gives you a little bit of guidance. I'm very much in favor of starting high, because you have told us repeatedly that we can, with very little effort, reduce these values over time, unlike starting low and working high. That's a much more difficult lift. So that's why I'm, and I'm fully aware of Director Roy's concerns about the impact on the general fund, but I would like to see, and that's the purpose of the January seventh workshop, just what that is. So my vote is sixty percent.
Anything further, Counselors? Okay, are you all set?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor and Council.
We appreciate your time and look forward to our workshop on the seventh.
Great. Thanks.
Administrator O'Malley, I'm flying blind up here, what time is it?
It's seven eighteen.
Oh, wow, okay. Well, we're going to take a few minutes here and start back up as soon as we can.
Hello, and welcome to our Tuesday evening council meeting. We're going to kick things off with the pledge of allegiance, and we have our Director of Code, Planning, Director of Planning and Code with us, John Connor. If you can please lead us.
I, the flag on the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I believe we have, Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward Seven, and we will note for the record that Counselor Longchamp has an excused absence this evening. As, excuse me, as a result, Mr. Mayor, under the city charter, you will be able to cast a vote if you wish in her absence.
Thank you, and I understand we have minutes?
Yes, the meeting of December 3rd.
May I have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Counselor Glant.
Second.
Standing by Counselor Najin. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
We are now up to public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record, and please indicate if you are Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office.
Matthew Diagran, Ward Four. So back on September 17th, Counselor Najin, you suggested that in this chamber, we should conduct a town hall style meeting at Calligan Hall or some other place to address gun violence and other issues within this community that we wanted brought before our state legislator delegation by this council. There has been silence on this idea since. Two weeks ago, I brought up ideas that I thought should be addressed by this council. Gun violence, speaking of that, today downtown, shots fired. It's not getting any better. On 11/19, this council used a thankfully rarely-used move of declaring an emergency so new beginnings could open a young adult shelter. In doing so, you guys did deprive the city of Lewiston any ability, if they were unable to make this meeting, any chance to offer their opinions on this plan before you. In truth, and let's be honest, they still did, opened it as a warning center. They could have been a warning center until December 20th, when the new rules for shelters came in effect. New beginnings could have come back on December 2nd, or even tonight, because it wasn't until December 9th that they finally got their clearance from the city to become a shelter. Council packets. Let's be honest, we're getting council packets that are not fully complete on what we're voting on. This is kind of an issue, as they are what we, the citizens, can look at to see what our issues are that we're looking at. We've had issues where complete rewrites of planned items have been done. Counselor Chidham, I'm looking at you on this one. At least the last time, you brought enough extra copies that we in the galley could read them. We've also had incomplete or early draft documents that have been used. For example, New Beginning Shelter. I get mistakes happen, and while I know it's shocking to say, Kathy and her people are only mortal humans and not gods. I'm going to ask, though, that from now on, can we use the packets, paperwork, as the standard of what we're going to run with? Because it's not unheard of the city to issue an amended PDF. Today, 12:57, day of the meeting, an amended one came out. Yes, it's going to delay things because we don't have all the documents in front of us, but in the name of transparency, is it not worth it so that we can't claim that you and the city are pulling fast ones on us?
Further public comment? Madam Clerk, could send item number one?
Excuse me, item number one. Public hearing on a new application for special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Just in Time Recreation 24 Molson Way. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Just in Time Recreation 24 Molson Way.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant?
Second.
Standing by Counselor Chidham. Discussion. Public comment on this agenda item. Back to the council. Counselor Najin.
I would just like to say that I'm happy to approve this amusement permit, and I'm glad that Just in Time Recreation is still in our community.
Absolutely, I second that. Further comments from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Item number two.
Item number two. Confirmation of Mayor Shalene's nomination to fill the current vacancy on the Ward Five position on the school committee. Requested action to receive the mayor's nomination and to appoint Iman Osman to fill the vacant Ward Five position on the Lewiston School Committee. Set appointment to be effective as of December 18th, 2024.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to, I move this question, move to table this question until our next meeting, which is January 7th.
Second.
The motion to table is now on, is now on the floor. Discussion. Counselor Sol.
I actually was going to, I'm in favor of moving this motion to the next meeting. Mr. Mayor, I know that you are the one who calls the shot and says, this is who I'm going to nominate. However, we, there was a deadline of yesterday at 4:00 PM, and your nominee was put in last week, and I just think that's kind of unfair to the applicants who maybe wanted to apply but saw that you had already nominated, so they didn't. But, but as the Ward Five Counselor, I have, I had a recommendation, and it's just disappointing that you nominated before getting all of the applications. But I don't know if that's in the charter that there's a deadline, like, does there have to be two weeks for applications?
No. Madam Clerk, could you elaborate on this?
Sure, there, there isn't a requirement in the charter regarding timeframe. We tend to do two weeks. Sometimes, though, we do need to look at the council meeting dates to see if we need to adjust that. We also were looking at the holidays coming up. So we had set the deadlines accordingly, and the press release was prepared and issued in the usual manner.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to say that if we are going to do deadlines, then we should stick to the deadline. That's all. So, thank you.
I can, thank you, Counselor Sol, I can elaborate on that. Yeah, so initially, there was a deadline for yesterday, and I had, is Iman here right now? Oh, there we are, thank you, Iman. Thank you for coming this evening. And once Iman's application comes through, came through, and I talked to him and saw his application, I was like, this is our candidate. In fact, there was an application, you're right, that came through on Sunday, which was from Billy Jane Cook, and I had already known about her interest and spoken with her before I made the decision. And so while her application did come in on Sunday, she was, she was considered for, and I called her today to let her know that I appreciate her application interest, and it was a hard choice, but I have not selected her and instead selected Iman Osman. Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for being prompt. It's not been known for you to fill seats in a prompt manner, but being ahead of the deadline date, I think also is terribly wrong, because it's just going to put a thing out there that whoever you want, no sense in applying, because you're not going to review the applications. I just think it's improper that we set a deadline, that the applications come in, you look at them all at that particular time, you make your choice, and then forward from there, your recommendation.
Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sincerely hope that the council ultimately decides to approve your nomination of Iman Osman. I know his character, I have reviewed his application, but on principle, I agree with the counselors to my left and right, that if there is a deadline, then all candidates should be reviewed after that deadline, and your recommendation for council approval follow that. Thank you for explaining that you have spoken with both of the candidates. I understand there were three applications, but one did not meet the residence requirements for Ward Five. So that there were two candidates, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for explaining that you had spoken with both, but I still feel it's important that if we have a process, and there are deadlines, that we wait until after that deadline before a nomination is made and the council takes action on that.
One second, Counselor Harriman, I'd like to further add. I understand, and I thought it would be more prudent to include the application by the clerk's deadline for the packet, so that way all of the council could know of my nomination. And then just the way the meetings line up, this is really the best meeting to approve, Mr. Iman, or Mr. Osman, simply because the next time the school committee meets will be, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Harriman, it will be the day before we meet in January?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there will not be, I understand, you know, people's opposition to this on principle, but I would, especially if there are no concerns with his, with his nomination to deprive Ward Five representation even for one meeting. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. So it sounds like we had, I believe the, the call was put out there on December 4th. There were three applications total. One of them was Mr. Osman, came in before, so it would have been the 11th when, you know, when the selection was made, that's when our agenda packet for tonight came out. So Mr. Osman's application, there was another one that was deemed ineligible, and then Ms. Cook, who had been consulted before the 11th as well. And Madam Clerk, were there any more applications that came in?
No, that was it.
So, to me, it sounds like all of the applications were considered. As the City Council rep to the school committee, it would be prudent if we could fill this so that we had a full complement of members, especially since we're meeting on January 6th, which is the night before our next council meeting on January 7th. And I guess I don't, you know, while I agree with the, the objections based on the deadline and having someone selected before the deadline that was, that was advertised, I don't see the logic in extending this to our next meeting, where all of the candidates have been considered, all the candidates who applied, and I just don't see what adding that delay will do for this process. And if anyone could explain the benefit of tabling this until our next meeting, and what we'd get out of that. Thank you.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Her application didn't come into the 15th, even though you may have talked to her sooner, so the 11th doesn't apply. Did you not meet last night without Counselor Five, Ward Five? Did it stop you from doing any work?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Glant, please, please finish, and then we'll recognize other counselors.
He's making a plea that he needs the individual, yet there was no one there last night. I want to know if it affected any of the votes.
In fact, the Ward Five, the Ward Five School Committee representative was there last night, last night was her last night.
Last night, right.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we had a full complement last night.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Sol.
So my concern is that if anyone was interested, and then they saw it came out on, was it the 12th, maybe, the 12th? It was put online on the 12th?
I believe it was the 4th, December 4th.
No, when the?
Oh, the agenda?
Right.
The agenda packet was last Thursday, whatever last Thursday was, the 12th, yes.
Showing Mr. Mayor's nomination.
Correct, yes.
My concern is that others may have said, oh, well, what's the point? Because he's already nominated. So I just was hoping maybe we could open it up and, I don't know, get some more applications, if that's what was going to happen. I, it, it just seems like we should give everybody the same opportunity.
I will not be changing my nomination. Counselor, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a conundrum here. It's a scheduling snafu, and simply because of the one-day overlap and so on. I think the point has been made that we would prefer to have all applications in and reviewed before a nomination is made. Having made that point, I withdraw my motion to table this item.
Madam Clerk, do we, is that all that's needed, or do we need Counselor Glant to confirm that?
Typically, it would be the maker of the motion would withdraw.
Okay.
Yes, and which is Counselor Chidham, yes.
Excellent. Counselor Harr, well, at this point, we do not have a motion on the table, correct?
Correct.
May I have a motion to approve this nomination?
So moved.
Counselor Najin, standing by Counselor Harriman. Yes, Counselor Harriman.
I just wanted to also add, just as a point of process, that this particular kind of, filling this vacancy according to the charter is the mayor's prerogative. I believe the, the exact language is, subject to the consent of the City Council. To be, to be frank, the mayor doesn't even have to advertise for applications if he didn't want to. I mean, we may wish that the process worked differently as counselors, but the charter is clear that, that it is the mayor's, the mayor's nomination.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Chidham.
We have discussed the motion to table, and I think Counselor Harriman is referring to that motion to table, and the process, we're now acting on the motion to confirm or consent to your nomination of Mr. Osman.
I understand.
Noted.
At this point, I, I feel that Counselor Harriman's comments are still germane. Counselor Harriman, do you wish to continue?
My only comment was that the, you know, this is a mayoral nomination, subject to approval by the council. The, the deal about applications, it actually doesn't have to happen. It's probably best practice to, to take applications from the public, but in, in a sense, the council's hands are tied here as far as who gets to be nominated. Our, our only action to take, according to the charter, is to say yes or no on that nomination.
Counselor Glant.
Pandora's box, so we can vote him down? Yes or no, we can vote him down, would that be correct? If we didn't like the situation? Correct? Do we not have that power as councilman?
I would have to defer to someone else to answer that.
Yes, I mean, the council?
Right?
Sorry, is that your question, Counselor Glant?
Yeah, I mean, he's acting like we don't have any say.
I, I understand. As mayor, I get to appoint the person, but yes, the council confirms. So the council could approve the nomination, which I wholeheartedly suggest. The council could also not approve the nomination this evening. Yes, Counselor Najin.
So just to make a state, general statement on the, on the applicant, I know Iman Osman, I know the work that he does in our community, especially with youth. I, I know his care for the community, and since there is only one nominee that's being moved forward by the mayor, I have no problem supporting Mr. Osman for the position, and I do wish that we could move past a period of the appearances of impropriety, and also the tensions within council, the body with the mayor. So, you know, in, in the spirit of the holidays, I would say that maybe we just move the question.
Do we have, so you would like to move the question?
I would.
Do we have a second for that at this point? I would like to remind the council, we have not been to public comment yet.
I would second that, as long as we take public comment on this item.
So do, are you, are you seconding it, or are you not seconding it?
I would, I would withdraw my motion to move the question if it preludes public comment.
Yeah, okay. At this point, I would like to go to public comment, but yes, I'd like to recognize Counselors, Counselor Chidham?
Well, I just wanted to say?
And then Counselor Sol, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Osman, I, I want you to recognize that the debate up here is not anything to do with your qualifications. You, you are eminently qualified for this, and I wholeheartedly support your nomination. The discussion has been about the process, exclusively about the process. So I wanted to make sure that you and, and the public understands that.
Counselor Sol.
I just want to point out that as well, it's really, if, I don't know how we can fix it, but if we're going to set a deadline, I just really think we should stick to it. That's my, that's my final say.
Counselor Glant, did you want to say something before, but we are now heading to public comment for this agenda item? If there are people who would like, if there are persons who would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium, and you'll each have three minutes.
My name is Ayann Leibdi, I live in Lewiston. A couple months ago, I felt like I wasn't good enough.
Can you please speak in to the microphone? Step closer if you can, or move, yes, thank you.
A couple months ago, I felt like I wasn't good enough for soccer, and I was ready to give up. But Coach Osman told me, if you're willing to put in the work, I'll make sure you have what you need to get better. True to his word. He rented out facilities so we could train and improve. Thanks to his support, my skills and confidence grew in ways I never expected. Coach Osman under- ways I never expected. Coach Osman understands that success isn't just about what happens on the field. It's about building strong, confident individuals who know their worth and understand their purpose. He teaches our young people that through hard work, patience, and faith, anything is possible. He's helped them embrace their cultural identity with pride, reminding them that no matter what and where they come from, they have everything they need to succeed. For the Somali and Muslim communities, Coach Osman is more than just a coach. He's a living example of what happens when we lift each other up and believe in one another. He makes every young person feel seen, heard, and valued. In a world full of challenges, Coach Osman is a beacon of light and hope. He reminds them that dreams are within reach. Their faith is their strength, and they can overcome any obstacle that stands in their way. So thank you, Coach Osman, for the dedication and leadership that not only you gave to me, but to this community.
Good evening. My name is Jama Mohammed. I'm Lewiston resident for the past 16 years. Community leader, service provider, most important, I'm a father of eight kids. So I don't think so, we need just to do a lot of, you know, and who is Mr. Osman, and who is who. So Iman Osman came to the United States, 2005, Alana, Georgia. Right after he moved to Lewiston, Maine, he grew up here, he graduated from Lewiston High School, and he's currently working full-time at Mini Magharna Refugee Services. He's a, and case management and Section 20 supervisor. At the same time, he's also a founder and executive director at Lewiston, an urban youth network. So most important is, and as you can see all this audience here today, is just wanted to see representation from a school board, to be honest. So Iman Osman is a young, wonderful, very energized, and he already spent enough time to our community, and, and I really personally thank so much for him too, because he's one of our soccer coach, my own son, my own kids, I'm just starting. I know, and he's really been, and he's the second father of my kids. I think my son is here right now, would that there, somewhere here. He's, he's the coach. He's spent a lot of time. And being sitting in that school board table, I think he will really, really bring the message, positive message, and most important also, immigrant people of color, sometimes they feel like they left behind. They feel like they don't have a lot of representation, not only school, but also right here. I know I served this for a short bit of time, but we definitely need more than this. Thank you so much, and I hope you guys consider the picture of this audience here today without not even saying anything. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I did not expect to speak tonight, but I think it's really important, and I wanted to, first off, show my support for Iman, who is a great person, but also I want to share.
Mr. Mayor, could we have an identification, please?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Chidham. If you can please, give us your name and your, and your town of residence.
Yes. My name is Hawa Ali. I'm a business owner in Lewiston, and when I first moved to this country.
I'm sorry, where do you live?
Lewiston.
Okay, please continue.
Yes. My kid go to Geiger, that's why I wanted to say something. So I have a kid who is five years old. She started school this year as a pre-career. She started having some trouble at school, and I did not understand. Be mindful, my kids is mixed, is a mixed kids. She looks more American than African, but she still had issues because she lived with me, and she's inheriting those culture, you know, foundation. So I was getting a lot of messages from school that my kids was doing this and doing these things, and I was like, I did not understand what's going on. So I signed up for volunteer, so I go to school, I, I go to Geiger at least once a week to make sure I help my kid to assimilate, to integrate, to be like other kids. She've gotten better, but that's not it. We don't, we don't want to be like everyone else. We want to keep our own identity. And I think that's why it's important to send someone like Iman, so he can bring to the table who we are, who we are in our culture, so we can be represented as well. That's really important. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Realwan Osman. I'm a resident of Lewiston, and thank you all for joining. I think, I just wanted to say that we have a lot of parents here who cannot read and write, and I'm not speaking for them, but again, being here shows that they're here tonight to support, your support in confirming Iman to the school board. As both Hawa and Jama said, I think we, we, it is time. We need a representation in every area, including the school board. We have a lot of kids in our school system and the city. We have a lot of diversity in the city, and this is one step forward, and we are all here tonight. I don't think everyone is going to be coming and speaking, but we are all here tonight in support of, of the nomination of Iman to the school board. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shigra Abdurrahman, and I live in Lewiston, Maine. I just want to say I am in support of Iman Osman being elected to serve on the school board. I understand his hard work and his dedication to the community is really vital, and representation is something that we need in this community. There are, there were about, the, in 2015, there was a statistics that 20% of the students at Lewiston High School were Somali-American. In 2017, the NPR, NPR reported that nearly a quarter of the students at Lewiston High School were African refugees. This just so, this just goes to show that this community is diverse, and this community has many different people that it should be represented at all different levels. There are over 6,000 Somali, I mean, just immigrant, there are 6,000 immigrants that are in Lewiston, Maine currently, as of 2021, and this is important because this shows that this community is growing, and this community needs more diversity, it needs more people in positions of power to be able to advocate for the people that they represent. This is Lewiston, Maine, this is our home, and I believe Osman will be a great candidate to serve on the school board.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Glant.
I'm going to vote in the affirmative, because I think the individual's a good person, but I'm still upset with the process and how things were handled, and I don't think he should suffer what's, what's been done and not done correctly. Thank you.
I, I appreciate the councilor's concerns about, about process. I understand and value their feedback. Counselor Nagy.
I just wanted to quickly state, thank you all for coming out tonight. I think it's incredibly important. I think that when you claim your agency in these spaces, it allows everyone to have front and center our community's entire interests at mind. So thank you all very much.
Further comments? Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the speakers who spoke in favor of this appointment. They didn't change my mind. I have been in favor of this appointment from, from day one, for the reasons that you stated, as well as for the, the stellar track record that Mr. Osman has developed and established here in Lewiston. I think the school board and the city is fortunate to have him willing to step up and, and undertake this crucial task. So thank you, sir.
Further comments? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Iman Mahad Sennett. If the, if the council, thank you, thank you. If the council can please hold their applause, thank you. Item number 3.
Item number 3, Order Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute a Collective Bargaining Agreement for Fiscal Year 27-29 and Adjust the Current Wage Scale for the ASME Public Works Local 1458 Union as Proposed. Requested action.
One second, Madam Clerk. If, if, if you're staying, please be quiet. If you're leaving, please do so quietly. Thank you so much.
Requested action to approve the order authorizing the acting city administrator to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the ASME Public Works Local 1458 for fiscal year 27 through 29 and adjust the current pay scale of the ASME Public Works Local 1458 Union as proposed.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chidham, seconded by Counselor Harriman. Director, oh, yes, Administrator O'Malley.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We brought, brought this before you to deal with the work employees at Public Works. We're down 14 employees. Director Gagny is here. In the last several months, we've been meeting with the union, trying to come up with some solutions, and also during that time, the Paid Family Medical Leave Act came up, where we have to negotiate what the union will pay, what the city will pay. The current contract for the ASME Public Works Union does not allow the management team to hire an experienced employee at anything but the entry level. We saw that we were losing candidates because of this. So during our discussions, it was agreed that the, the union would allow the change to the contract that we could hire an experienced employee or an applicant up to the 10-year step. In addition, we have slid the starting pay up two steps, so that the starting pay is over $21 an hour now for entry level. The union has agreed to pay their 50% of the 1% premium that is going to go to the state. In addition to that, the union has agreed to give some financial stability to the city, so we know where we are long-term, to a, a new three-year collective bargaining agreement, starting in 2026, for three years with a 3% COLAR for each year. So our hope is that with the ability to attract experienced employees and pay them at higher than entry level, that will help Director Gagny with his shortage of 14 employees down at Public Works. And, and, you know, with such a shortage like that, we rarely see that during the wintertime, where we don't have the, the people to plow the streets, where if you live on a side street, it may take longer to get, for them to get to your residence. So our, our hope is that with these changes, that we may attract more candidates to the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Administrator O'Malley. Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, a classic case of you get what you pay for, and if we are not paying for quality employees, and we're not able to hire people at the levels that we need them, the entire city is going to suffer. The, the other side of the coin is that in order to adopt this shifting in the scale, there's going to be a greater pressure on the general fund, and that the, the taxes are going to have to be affected by it. This is the dilemma that is faced every budget season. What sort of services do we want to provide for as little money as possible? In my view, this is long overdue. For us not to be able to hire qualified people at the level that they would expect after having X number of years of experience in a job is ludicrous, and I'm glad to see that this has been dealt with, with this new contract, or this amendment to the contract. It is an amendment, is that correct?
It is an amendment, but then it will continue into the new CBA that starts in 2026.
And you made the point that this gives us a certain stability, and we know for the next four years now, what our labor costs are going to be, at least in the Public Works Department.
That is correct.
So that's, that's another gain for us, even though we may not like the idea that it's escalating every single year. That's a fact of life.
We were, I was negotiating last contracts where unions were asking for, you know, upwards of 9%. I mean, we've paid 4% and 5%, so we don't really know where the economy is going to go, but at least this gives us some stability, you know, for the next four years of what we're going to be paying for salary down at Public Works.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your efforts.
Counselor Nagy.
So I guess I'll start by saying that I'm happy, at least, that this doesn't kick in until the next budget cycle, so that we can account for, for the rising costs within the, the next budget. I'm not in favor of it, to be completely honest. I haven't been in favor of it, and, and there's several reasons why. You know, one of the things that I had pushed for, but, and during the last budget season, was, you know, better efficiencies, you know. I, I look at the escalating costs of all things, and, and I understand that the current budget agree, the, the current contract agreement creates a situation where we cannot bring skilled workers into, into Public Works at a favorable level, but we didn't do a study to figure out what other communities are paying. We, we also, in my opinion, are going to be in a situation where we can't fully staff Public Works with this, with this increase. And so, you know, one of the things I'd, I'd like to see, we, you know, we just talked about plowing, right? Instead of centerline plowing, actually having snow bands, so that we can effectively plow the cities when, when it's time to plow. And, you know, there are things that we could do, I think, just, just to provide a better level of service with the staff that we have now. So, you know, I had voiced my opposition to this before, I have to say it again, like eventually we end up in a situation where if pay is the only way that we're going to attract people to work for the city, and it's based not on what other communities are paying, but like what the union is able to negotiate out of us, eventually we're going to run into a situation where like there's just no money. There's no money to do anything. And so, you know, that's just where I'm at right now. But again, I'm glad that this isn't outside of the budget season, that it's actually has to be considered in the next budget.
Further comments or questions from the council? Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Yeah, I, I understand councilor's concerns. We're trying to hold down, hold down costs for, for taxpayers and the, and the budget, but we wouldn't be here if we didn't have unfilled positions, and that's where we're, that's where we're at right now. And I guess my argument would be if we don't have enough people to plow the, plow the snow after a storm, then, then what's the point? Further comments or questions? Counselor Nagy.
This doesn't have to be provided in this meeting, but I would like to know how many Public Works employees actually live in the city, and then also, on that level, I, I would also like to know how many Public Works employees are new mayors. I, I'd like to have an idea of what our recruitment practices are and who we're pulling in. Thank you.
Counselor Chidham.
Yes, Counselor Nagy made a point that this, prompted me to ask the question, does this kick in immediately, or does this kick in with the next fiscal?
As it says in the order, this will, the, the changes will kick in. The 3% COLAR is off in, in 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nagy, yes.
So that's my misunderstanding. So again, we're budgeting outside of the budget season, spending money that, that, it's really frustrating that we're, that we're giving raises outside of the budget season, that's all.
Further comments from the council? Anything further, Administrator O'Malley?
I'm also.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
No.
3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 6 to 1.
Thank you. Item, item number 4.
Item number 4, Update Regarding City Hall Pilot Program for the Condensed Four-Day Work Week Schedule. Requested action to authorize the permanent schedule change at City Hall to a four-day work week for City Hall staff.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chidham?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Harriman. Director Tario, please kick us off.
Hi, my name is Heather Tario. I'm the HR Director here with the City of Lewiston, and I'm here because the city council did approve the four-day work week pilot that started at City Hall on September 12th. This change has been enthusiastically appreciated by all of our staff, and so I'm here today to recommend that this pilot program become, become permanent. An internal survey was conducted for the City Hall staff, and 82% of the staff responded, and all of them were in favor of this continuing. Staff is feeling that they finally have that work-life balance that they never had before, and... And of those responses, one person said that they are able to experience personally that they are now valued as an employee where they might not have felt that before. Another person stated that customers seem to really enjoy us being open as early as 7:45. There's always a steady stream of customers from 7:45 to 8:30 for Treasury and City Clerks. And I think that it would be a disservice to taxpayers by taking away earlier hours of service. And then we did have one more individual say this schedule is a really big help when it comes to hiring for positions. I think we're getting more applicants because of the four-day work week and it's a really big selling point for making offers. If we reverse course now, it might be a big morale hit. So recently, I am aware of at least one person that did not accept a job that they were offered outside of the city because that job didn't offer a four-day work week. And we feel that it may be hard to retain some staff if we do reverse this. They may continue to look outside. Our front face facing departments have reported customers coming in when we're opening at those early hours and also utilizing those later hours on Tuesday. We do have a large array of the online services as well as some more additional online services that should become available soon. And all of those services are outlined in the memo that I presented to all of you. So we did a poll for other municipalities and 20 other municipalities have that four-day work week right now. And those numbers are rising every day. We're getting different municipalities that are, are moving to the four-day work week. So the City of Lewiston is competing with those other municipalities for the employees. And the City of Lewiston has experienced some loss of longtime employees who have gone to other municipalities either for pay or other benefits. And because this is such a high-demand hiring market, the city is trying to retain employees and attract others to come to work for the City of Lewiston.
Yes, questions, comments from councilors?
Mr. Mayor, if I could continue?
Yes, please. Administrator O'Malley?
Director Tario talked about the, some new services are going to be online. We are going to be having, I'm hoping within the next week, and I see Director Star is here. He can probably address that from our MIS department in terms of things on the third floor with the plumbing permits. And I did ask Director Connor, I believe is here, to get up and speak to that in terms of what he's seeing with the traffic on the third floor. Is John over there? So why don't we start with Director Star? He can give some more information on the new services that'll be online and then we can go to Director Connor.
Thank you. Director Star, welcome.
Good evening. So we've been working with Tyler Technologies to finish up on the last pieces of the puzzle to get all of these services online, and that is being able to accept the online payments. So yesterday, we successfully finished testing of online payment processing. So from what I understand, by tomorrow, we should get confirmation from our processor in writing, and then, then at that point, we can make those services live online. We've just been waiting for that payment processor confirmation to go with that.
Am I to understand that if we receive a word from our vendor, which is Tyler Technologies, that it's a go, we can turn that on sometime tomorrow? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's my understanding. It was, we're waiting on the payment processor to just confirm that the payments were processed correctly.
Okay.
That was one piece we've been waiting on.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, Councilor Chittam?
May I ask a question of Director Star? Is there a differential in the cost of a permit from the window to the computer? Does it cost more to do it online?
Yeah, there is a fee, an online fee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I can get you that information as if you'd like details.
Councilor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it any more expensive than using a credit card at the window?
It will be the same percentage. It's the same company we're using for the window that we're using for the online.
So in reality, a lot of people use credit cards, so it's really not an additional fee. It's more convenient.
It's an additional fee and if you, you're using the credit card, then
Correct.
using a check or cash.
Correct. Thank you.
To that point, Director Roy, will we be able to pay by e-check, Director Star?
Yes, yes. E-check was also tested yesterday, so we're just waiting for confirmation.
So if, if residents did not want to pay the surcharge for, for credit card, they could pay with an e-check directly from their bank account?
Correct, but there's still an online fee that will be charged. I believe it's a dollar 50. Dollar 50 to $3, I believe, for use in the online.
Even for an e-check?
Correct.
I see. Counselor Najin?
Just really quickly, like I get like when you're paying like your property tax, right? Or like excise tax on a new car, right? Like the, the credit card processing fee is pretty heavy. And so therefore it does, you know, vote in one's favor to pay via check. I guess the question that I have, like, I'm one of those folks that, like, I don't know where my checks are, right? Like, you know, like, I haven't written a check since like 1998. And, you know, so like, but I do know, I do do, you know, bank transfers all the time, which is the e-check. And so I guess the question is, why would there be a fee for the e-check? Just out of curiosity, why, why are we just, like, when it's like a dollar or a dollar 50, why are we putting it on there?
So the fee was created when EnterGov was first done with the contract for the city to cover the software. So it's going to cover all the changes that are done to EnterGov.
And is there any point in which we go back out to bid for any of these contracts concerning, like, 2.5% over a total value is expensive, right, for a credit card processor? But I don't know, are we limited to only using eGov? Or can we use, can we check to see if there's cheaper options out there?
Correct. So usually we sign a contract, I would say, probably about three-year contract with an extension for a couple more years. I believe Informee, the company that we use, currently is the lowest in percentage on credit cards.
I take it that's just for municipalities? Like, there's a different charge for businesses than individuals? Yeah? Is that what the?
Yes.
I mean, just because I know that, like, you know, the Lewiston Farmers Market pays like 25 cents per swipe and then an additional, like, I think it's 1%. So I'm just curious, like, there's a different fee schedule for municipalities, I assume?
Informee was originally set up by the State of Maine. So it was owned by the State of Maine. It was due to all the issues with lawsuits about causing charging people percentages. So therefore, most individuals went with Informee. It has recently been purchased by Tyler Technologies, Munis, which is our financial software. And most cities and towns use it for rapid renewal. So it is currently what we've been using. I'd have to look at the last time we've gone out to bid for those services for our registration tax office and City Clerks.
I apologize for all those questions. I just wanted to kind of clarify on those pieces because I think online services are by far vastly preferred by folks that are under a certain age. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, normally those costs are absorbed in the processing, you know. So that's why I was asking, but I appreciate the explanations and I'm sorry if I sidetracked anything.
Further questions for Director Star? Director Star, what, what services, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or Administrator O'Malley. What services are going to be coming online in the future?
I can read that to you. It's going to be rental registration, change of use permits, building for commercial for additions, demolitions, foundations, only, new construction, renovation, alteration, repair, and unusual structures, fence permits, mechanicals, plumbing, including internal and subsurface wastewater, residential one and two family, including foundation-only, mobile home modular, new construction, renovation, swimming pool permits, garage sale permits. And that's it. The new, those are going to be the new things that are added.
Okay. And then what items does that leave to still get online?
I don't think there's anything else left. I mean, we have
Is that mostly?
We have a bunch of stuff already that you can do online.
Understood.
So that's, I think, special event permit we're working on because it's such an extensive permit when someone wants to do an event in the city. So we're still working on that. And I believe that's still in the process of the actual revamping the application form. So that's not online yet. But I think once, the issue is, once we get the, the payment process as up, we can add things. And that was the part that was delaying it all, of them being able to take the Visa, the American Express, the e-check, things like that. That's what's been delaying us.
Thank you. Further questions for Director Star? Director Star, we await your announcement tomorrow.
I'll send you all an email.
Thank you. Director Connor?
Good evening. My name is John Connor, resident of Ward 7 and also the Director of Planning and Code Enforcement for the City of Lewiston. I just want to speak to you all really quickly just about raw numbers, just raw data. One could logically assume that if employees are only working four days a week, that, you know, logically, the level of service may go down. And I too, you know, I see them every day. I see the, the employees of the Code Enforcement Office every day and how much they're working. So I went back and looked over the exact same time period, September of 2022 through December 17th. In that time period, there were 499 inspections by the Code Enforcement Office with six code officers working five days a week. As in 2023, during the exact same time period, same number of code enforcement officers working five days a week, they had 658 inspections. So you saw a rise of about 31% in those inspections. Now we come to this year, September of 2024 through today, with six code enforcement officers working four days a week, we've had 841 inspections today. So that's a 27% increase just from last year. You go look at permits issued, we're right on par. In 2022, we had about 531 permits issued with six code enforcement officers working five days a week. The following year, in 2023, about 520. And then this year, on the four-day work week with six officers, we've had about 530. So we're right on par, same level of service, given the, the same number of code officers. The big one that we've seen a difference in is during 2022, we had 21 code cases. Those are your, you know, a lot of your complaints for trash and whatnot, that the folks are going out to and opening an actual code case. In that timeframe, September of 2022 through December, we had 21 code cases. In 2023, that rose to 34. But then when we went to a four-day work week with the same number of code officers, that number jumped to 166. So attribute it to what you will. I don't know. I'm just looking at the raw numbers. And if you're looking at it from that perspective of, are you getting, are the citizens getting the same level of service? I would argue they are. In fact, probably even more with the current schedule.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate you being here. Yes, questions for Director Connor. Counselor Najin?
So first and foremost, I would say that some of those numbers may be a bit skewed because we were talking about COVID times at one point, and now we have new leadership in, in the Code Enforcement Office as well. And so, you know, there are pieces there that maybe you're not taking credit for, but it's, that's fine. One thing that I would absolutely like to see is more applications able to be done online. And I think we've had a couple of conversations around that, you know, like one of the things, if you pull a renter permit and you want to replace windows, right? As opposed to, you know, coming in and saying, this is the window I'm going to buy. Maybe there's a pre-approved, you know, list of windows that you can, that you can do, you know. Like ultimately, I don't want anything at City Hall that's able to be done during business hours to not be able to be done outside of business hours. I know that's probably not possible, but if we, you know, aim for perfection, maybe we hit excellence type of idea. And I think you've been working through some of the more onerous pieces of the, of the permitting processes. And so if we could get, you know, I remember when I first pulled my first fence permit and I came in and Linda Tripp almost like lost her mind because I had no idea what I was talking about and none of the information was available online. So like those pieces where we could just make it easier for both staff and, and the constituent who, at the end of the day, that's who we work for and that's, and that's what City Hall is supposed to benefit. So, absolutely. Thank you.
Further comments or questions for Director Connor? Director Connor, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Administrator O'Malley, anything else at this point?
Yeah, the City Clerk's Office also deals a lot with the front-facing folks. I've asked Kathy to compile some numbers to share with you as well.
Sure, we were taking a look.
Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The use of online services already that folks are using. We took a look at absentee ballot requests for the presidential election. 43% of requests for absentee ballots came through either online requests or mailed in or in the Dropbox, the applications. Also, so 43% of all requests, folks did not have to come into the building. They were able to request an absentee ballot and other means. Voter registration, 35% of voter registration has been done online or in the mail. So again, those folks do not have to come into the building because they're able to do that online. The state just launched the online program in January. And dog licensing, about 80% of dog licenses, relicenses are done online and through the mail. So a lot of folks don't have to come into the building to do those services. So as we noted, we're adding more and more services online to make it available for folks to be able to do 24/7. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And yeah, I, and I appreciate the staff's efforts to, to take things online. That's certainly where things are at. And, you know, this place isn't Disneyland. People don't want to come here. People want to have, have their services, you know, met. And even I, I have 24/7 access to the building, but I use the payment Dropbox outside to avoid the line and everything else. So, yeah, no, it's where, it's where things are headed. I have been in favor of, you know, the remote work policy that we recently passed. And then this four-day work week, I think we need to have the ability to attract staff and retain staff. And this will be critical going forward. Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no doubt that this has been an experiment. It's generated a lot of good data. One piece that's missing, though, is the information from the constituents, from the taxpayers, the people who expect government to provide services for them and who pay for those services. I'm in a difficult position here because I know many members of the staff far better than I know many of my constituents. And it's not a surprise to me that the staff is in favor of a better work-life balance, of a four-day work week. That, that almost goes without saying. I'm amazed that, that, you know, you had to present us with data that said that. What I haven't heard tonight, although I have heard outside the building through email and direct conversations with the people who are paying the taxes, is that they are not satisfied with a four-day work week, that they have lost access to Friday. Come in here and do their business on Friday. Those who would prefer to do internet are free to do so. Those, those folks who want to do this electronically, that's always been available. And I'm pleased that it's increasing in scope and that more and more services are becoming available. However, there is a significant segment of the population that does not conduct business that way. And they expect to come into City Hall on Fridays and do their business. Even now, and this speaks more to our lack of ability to communicate than it does to the experiment. Even now, people are coming to City Hall on Fridays after two or three weeks, two or three months of this trial period. I appreciate that Director Tario has done everything she can to retain qualified staff to make Lewiston an attractive place to work. And that's very much appreciated. You've done an excellent job. However, the folks who are relying on access to City Hall are being denied that service for one, one day a week. The old schedule provided face-to-face service between city staff and the public 37 and a half hours a week. The new schedule has provided direct access to the public and City Hall staff 34 and a half hours a week. The public is getting less for its money. It's still paying the same amount, but it's, it's getting less service for its money. It does not have access that it did previously. As I said, I'm conflicted about this because I appreciate the effort that's gone into providing for a better work-life balance. I understand that more and more communities are going to the four-day work week. But I'm also hearing from my constituents that they do not appreciate it, that they do not like having to be locked out of City Hall on that, that Friday, or Monday, or Tuesday, or whatever day of the or whatever day of the week it happens to be. So I'm, I'm afraid that I'm going to have to vote against extending this, simply because I believe that the taxpayers of Lewiston are the people who would really, should really be calling the shots. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to add my experience with communication from residents, which I understand may be different than other counselors. I've had a total of one resident reach out to me with a concern about being inconvenienced or unable to access City Hall services. I've had some other folks reach out to me, but they didn't, they didn't provide, you know, a reason why they didn't want the, the four-day work week. I followed up with some of them and they confirmed that they had not been inconvenienced by this, but they still were not in favor of it. So just my experience, I've had one person who has been affected by it and I, I feel for them and I, I realize that not every single service is going to be able to go online, but I feel like moving from five days to four would still be a, a workable balance for most people. Thank you.
One second, Counselors Administrator, Administrator O'Malley and Madam Clerk. Can you speak to the level of utilization of our new hours, both in the morning and then Tuesday evening?
Yeah, we open now at, the doors at 7:45. We used to open up at 8:30. And there will be people lining up in front of the clerk's office, in front of Treasury in those hours. And then Tuesdays, the doors are open until 5:30. If you're in here, it's not like we shut you out, so you're able to actually get services till 6 o'clock in the evening. So we, we see an expanded use-
You're already in line, correct?
If you're in line, alright. So not like they're going to shut the door and say, sorry, come back at 5:30. If you're in the building and it's 5:30, you're going to get, you're going to get service. So I'm seeing a lot of people using the early morning hours, you know, coming in at 7:45. I mean, there'll be people, you know, 7:30, I'll say, oh, we're opening up in a couple minutes, they'll be coming in, so. And I, I seen that with the clerk's office and Treasury that, so we'll go, if we do go back, we don't open the door till 8:30 on the old schedule and we close them at four. So you're, these people are losing those early hours and then the Tuesday. It is an adjustment, but it is, you know, people are taking advantage of these early hours and the late, the late hours on Tuesday. If we go back to the old schedule, yes, we will be open on Friday, but we won't open that door till 8:30 and we'll close them at four.
Thank you. Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I too have had the pleasure of talking to a lot of constituents, some even not in my ward. I go out and I'm in the community and I purposely ask people that live in Lewiston, what are your thoughts on this? I have not had one person say that they were in favor of this. Everybody has said this is a big, big inconvenience to them. If you think about it, when do people get paid? Thursdays, but most get paid on Fridays. When is City Hall not open? Fridays. If I have to register my car, I could go online, but yet I've got to pay to register my car online and use a credit card. I, like other people, don't want to pay a surcharge if I'm going to do, use that. I would like to be there in person. I will drive to City Hall and save a buck fifty or $2 just to come down here and do that. We, we tax people, they pay enough taxes, they pay enough money here and there. I think opening up five days a week, I had said this before when we were doing the pilot, you know, some people want Mondays off, some people want Fridays off. Yes, Mondays have holidays in them, but what happens on that week when everybody has a Friday off and you have a, a holiday on a Monday, a Tuesday, or a Wednesday? You're closed down for more days in that week and that's more of an inconvenience to people. So again, I, I, I really, I'm in favor of a work-life balance, but I think we could go about it by saying, who would like to work on Monday? Who would like to take Fridays off and who would like to take Mondays off? That way there, you're open five days a week to everybody in the community. I think we can work with that. But I, I just can't vote yes to this because all the constituents say no, so.
Counselor Najin.
So I, I think we've all heard the phrase that, that, you know, it's, it's difficult to get the genie back in the bottle. And so I'm not suggesting that we don't continue to look for improvements, for sure. I can tell you, there are times that I've been here on Fridays where there are people trying to get marriage licenses. There, you know, it would be, it would be great, I think, on some level, if we could staff City Hall, at least for essential services, for all five days, right? Also, that would most probably require more people to work here, just to, to think about that. So we would have to hire more people to fill those positions when we're already running tight on budgets. I would be in favor of, there's a few things I think we need to think about. One, we will eventually have a new administrator. And so if we're making, if we're making a permanent decision right now, I think maybe that's, that's something that, that is not necessarily required. Maybe we could extend the, the pilot program for a while, but I think that we have to be competitive in the marketplace. I, I can also say, again, like I've been here on a Friday when I wanted to register my car and I couldn't, so I had to do it online, which was fine, you know, I lived. But, but like at the same time, that's not always the case for everybody, right? Like if you, if you, if you need to, to get, to get things done, I think a feathered approach where, where you do have some essential services open on a Friday could be beneficial. I don't know how that's going to work, simply with the staff we have now. So that's one piece. And another piece is we need to get better about what we're offering on our website. And so maybe you can get a bunch of different applications online, but like if you're like, oh, I want to open an ice cream shop, tell me where you can figure that out on the website. Tell me anywhere you can figure that out on the website. You know, so our website's needs improvement. You know, I would be in favor of extending the pilot program for another six months or a year, knowing that we need to extend hours at least one day a week if we're not going to do a feathered, a feathered approach. I would be happy with extended hours on a Tuesday. One of the things to think about too, for people who are hybrid, a lot of folks have Friday off, right? So like you're, you're, you're sitting at home, or if you're working a four-day week, right? You're sitting at home, you're like, oh, I got to go do that thing at City Hall, and you go down and you can't do it. But if you could do it online, that solves that problem. And, and so, you know, I think there, there, there are things that we can do to improve this, for sure. I think it's going to be very difficult for morale at City Hall to say, we're going to just cancel the pilot program completely. I think there's improvements that we can do here. But that's, you know, that's my take.
Counselor Saul, did you have something? Yes, please use your mic.
I'm just trying to put my thoughts together because I know that this is really controversial for the public. And so I'm kind of torn because I do like the program. I like the idea of the staff having that work-life balance. And, and I understand not everybody in the city has that, however. Ultimately, we need to keep staff and we need to be able to attract staff. So if we can't keep staff, then there's nobody here to help you on Friday anyway. So I just, I'm in favor of this for the retaining employees and attracting employees. I don't hate the idea of extending the pilot, but I'm not ready to just sort of put it to bed either. I, I think it has a lot of value. I think I'd like to see it continue.
You know, and sometimes it requires a conversation. You know, somebody stopped me and they're like, so what, now four days instead of five? What, what is this about? And I'm like, okay, but we're now open earlier on, on weekdays, we're now open later, and then you can get more business, or well, soon we'll be able to, pending Director Starr's announcement, more, you know, conduct more business online than you've been able to in the past. And, you know, I, I guess I don't want us to lose fact of, of what's going on here. The goal is not to visit City Hall. The goal is to get, is to receive services. And if we can receive services at another time that is available to our residents, for instance, like early mornings or in the evening on Tuesdays or online, you know, I think everyone will, will be okay. And yeah, that's my thoughts for right this second. Yes, Counselor Najin.
Another piece too, and I think we've done a better job of this recently, is just like follow-up in, in times when people are not available, right? We've had a couple of situations I can think of in the past where, again, it had to do with pulling permits, but like the person that, that needed to, to approve the permit was on vacation and like nobody else picked it up. We don't do that anymore. We respond by having other people, you know, pick up those gaps. And so I think the more that we can do in order to, to, to make contact with, with our constituents when City Hall is closed and be able to help them is, has value. You know, that, that's just one of those pieces where if you send an email on a Thursday night and somebody answers you before Monday, that's great. Like, you know, that's, that, that, I think, you know, just to name that piece too. So again, like I, I would, I would move that, you know, I would authorize the, the extension of the pilot program for another, either six months or a year for the four-day work week, contingent on improvements around both the website and the possibility of, extending hours on, for instance, Tuesday, which I think is, you know, if we extend hours on a Monday, which isn't being done anyway, that's the, the observed holidays, right? So. So that would be my motion, that we would authorize the, the extension of the pilot program.
We, we will go to, to, yes, we will be going to public comment. Please continue, Counselor.
Well, let's go to public comment first.
Are you, are you not making motion at this time then?
Well, I would make the motion to, to authorize the extension of the pilot program for the next, I would say, six months.
Well, are you, do you want to hold your motion until after public comment, or are you making a motion now? I guess I'm just trying to figure out where you're at.
Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a point of order, Counselor Chittam?
I do.
Please continue.
There is a main motion on the floor. If Counselor Najin wishes to amend that motion, that would be the proper procedure.
I appreciate you pointing that out. Counselor Najin, if I may recommend us going to public comment first and then-
Sure.
Yeah, if you're okay with that. Any thoughts or comments from Counselors before we go to public comment? My only thought is, you know, and I understand about possibly expending, extending it, you know, I just want to send a clear message to, to staff tonight. And I'm concerned that, you know, what good intentions to, to extend this pilot program, it just kind of creates doubt and uncertainty. And I'm just concerned about how staff and then future applicants will, will perceive that. Yes, Counselor Najin?
The only thing I would say to that is there are legitimate constituent complaints. And so like if we could work on those pieces, that would be-
Wholeheartedly agree that we need to get services online and, and continue working on the website. Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to come back for comments, correct, for us?
Oh, yes, you'll get another-
I'll hold mine till that thing.
Have another bite at the apple here. Okay, we are now heading to public comment for this agenda item.
Matt Roy, Ward Three? Yes, Three. Yes, so let's start here. Now, administration HR is selling a false bag of goods to the staff. It's either we ha, we take the pilot and make it permanent, or we go back to the old way. A blanket approach is, is not the only way you can have a four-day work week for staff and be open to the public five days a week. You go down Main Street, go to 12 High Street, you know, where all the physician practices are with Central Maine Medical. For 30 years, I've had a family member working in one of these practices and they have, they work four days a week, the offices open five days a week. This is, this pilot program is, how do I say this? Was created without a lack of vision and a very tunnelled vision. And then we go to the, the point of city, coming to City Hall versus e-services. No, it'd be great if art, if e-government services here in Lewiston, the state of Maine in the U.S. were on par with what you could, the citizens of Estonia and Singapore have, app-based everything essentially. Estonia, you can actually vote online. The only reason I bring up Estonia because the population is pretty damn close to what the population of the state of Maine is. Then, as Counselor Najin, early, during budget season, I think actually Counselor Roy piggybacked on this also, talking about the library change in those hours. If you live here in the city of Lewiston, let's say you work between, you know, normal business hours, eight to five, and you work at, let's say, Portland, Augusta, neither of these, neither the pilot or the old system work for you if you want to avoid paying a 2.5% fee, which is what Infomaine charges, with a minimum of, of $1 fee. Again, this is, that whole issue can be resolved negotiating that contract. You know, you could, anyone that has an online banking, you don't, you don't see a fee when you use that with your credit union or your bank. Again, this is a lack of imagination and if, whoa, even if you, getting back to, you know, the Augusta-Portland, eight to five, let's say you work, live and work here locally between 7:15 and 5:30, again, same problem. If you want to avoid the fees, avoid the current fee structure and come to City Hall, you can't. Unless you, well, at least if you live and work here local, you could come during your lunch break, but, you know, everyone else who isn't here at-
That's time, thank you.
5:30 or first thing in the morning.
You're welcome to submit your comments to publiccomment@lewistinmain.gov. Further public comment?
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones. I live in Ward Two and I own property in, in Ward Seven. I bought a building there in July and I've been working to transform it into a childcare center, which means I require a lot of human contact on the third floor. Everything that happens in this building isn't just a financial transaction that can happen through an online portal. There are relationships that take place. I don't even need to go into all the fees. So I had notes drafted and then I revised them and then I printed them and then I left them at home. That's very Lisa. I do want to say that it was, it was baffling just now to see the mayor roll his eyes and say, oh, they'll survive. Because I literally am paying taxes on two properties in this city and trying to improve my little corner of Lewiston. So the black and white thinking that's coming from the council is mind-blowing. It does not have to be either the old way or the pilot way. Lots of places, just like Matt said, have four-day work weeks and five-day operations. What I'm hearing is that we need more early mornings and we need more late nights. I don't understand why every employee needs to be in the building all at the same time in order for it to function. Like I assume they take vacations and days off and the rest of the building goes on, so I think you can make it happen. I've got a minute and a half. So I'm going to just try to read through what I actually wrote. I'm here tonight to encourage you to please reopen City Hall on Fridays. We are one of the largest cities in the state with a great need for social services and other municipal services housed at City Hall. Blah, blah, blah about my daycare, lack of accessibility to them on federal holidays and Fridays when my contractors are all working. So just real life example, I had the question for Steve last Thursday. I emailed him and he got back to me first thing Monday, but my contractor was working Friday and Saturday. He got everything else done. Now I don't know when he's going to come back and do the thing that I got my answer for on Monday. I don't see any reason why the city can't offer staff four-day schedules with a five-day operation. The agenda packet was very, very slanted, I think you all know that. I just think you'd be doing a huge disservice to taxpayers to permanently take away options and encourage, which really feels like force, us to use online, which costs more. And Counselor Glant, I do come in here and write checks. I literally do, ask Cindy Dewoy. I just, like rhetorical question, has anybody kept track of how many people are trying the door on Fridays? I've seen it more than once in my limited time in this area. And then, you know, I'll just toss out the, if we're going to put so many services online, aren't we actually going to be reducing personnel we need in the building? Just throwing that out there. Thank you, guys.
Further public comment? Further public comment?
Matthew Egren, Ward Four. The four-day work week experiment has had its challenges. We've had people who don't like not being able to access services on Friday. I am kind of thinking maybe we should wait to permanently make decisions until we have a new city administrator in the building. Let them take the time to figure out what they, their view, their vision for the city However, there are some changes. I'd like to see if we're gonna stay with a four-day work week. One would need to move it from Monday to Thursday to Tuesday to Friday. Extend the early hours not only on Tuesday, but also on Friday evening. As people said, more people get paid at the end of the week, they have the money in hand, they can walk in here. I don't do hardly any business transactions online. I believe in face-to-face. I will say that I've sent emails to Kathy on Friday and got responses from Kathy on Friday and I made comments, hey, aren't you supposed to be on day off? But Friday night, you could extend the hours out. As someone pointed out, we cut down the number of hours that we're already serving the people. Extend those out on Friday night, on Tuesday night. Gives people two nights that they could come in here, see staff. We have a lot of things going online, that's great, but there's a whole generation of us who don't believe in being online and doing things because we don't trust it. You know? My kid, my kid would do everything online if he could. Me? If I can't walk in and see somebody, I'm not gonna do it. It's just the facts of life. Half our population don't trust the online. Half our population may not understand things and need the help of city staff to figure out their issue. As Counselor Nagin said, the first time he pulled paperwork, he had none of the right words. And if you had submitted that online, they probably would have been laughing for a day So I think you guys, yes, continue this four-day, change the dates to Tuesday to Friday, extend Friday's hours as well, and extend it until six months after your new city administrator is hired, to let them have their chance to put their vision on this building. Because they're the person you're hiring to lead us. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Nate Libby. I'm a resident and taxpayer of Ward Six. I'm also Assistant Director of Economic and Community Development. I wanted to offer one additional piece of information so that you could make your decision and have an understanding of what it's like to try to hire city staff during this pilot period. I'm hiring for three positions currently in a nine-person department. I've extended an offer to one that's been accepted. This week, I conducted interviews for a second position, and then the first week in January, we'll be conducting interviews for a third position. In all three of those cases, with all of those candidates, we have explained the four-day work week, we've explained it as a time-limited pilot, we've explained that the council will be making a decision on whether to keep it, amend it, or cancel it this month. We have conveyed that employees at City Hall generally appreciate the four-day work week. They find themselves more productive, they find themselves with a bit more time on the weekend to take care of personal business, rest, chores, all of those things. But we've also said that this is a council decision. And while the feeling and mood in, in, among city staff here at City Hall has improved, it's, it's a question up in the air still. And so, I'm more or less asking you not to end the program tonight if, if extending it is not, is not what you favor. If extending it is not what you favor, allow it to continue for some time further so that we can have conversations with all of those applicants we have in the pipeline across the organization about these changes. I think it would be challenging for us to, to reach out to those various applicants that are in this process and say, sorry to report, the four-day work week we've been operating under has been, has been ended. Would you like to continue with the interview process? I think some of those folks will continue with us, but, but it's hard to say. Offer that piece of information as you make your decision. Thanks for listening.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Before I turn it over to counselors, Administrator O'Malley, can you detail the concerns that we would have? I think Counselor Nagin touched on it. We might not have enough staff in having, being open five days a week, but with a four-day work week for staff.
That was, excuse me, before we did this, we had actually looked into that with HR in terms of the staffing we have. We have some positions, yes, people do take vacations, but we have people that are working that need cover for them. So if you have those people staggered, it, it just wouldn't work. We would have to probably hire some part-time people to fill that. You know, the suggestion of open late on Friday night is never gonna fly with the employees. We do have union contracts that state the, the schedule that they'll work. However, we did agree to, the unions did agree to this time, and this is really all I could get from the unions to agree to was Tuesdays and then opening up earlier. So if we were to try to stagger and have some people work on Monday and some work Friday, and it would be great if we could do that, but in reality, just with the staffing that we have and the job functions, and most of this is front-facing people. I mean, as one of our speakers said, that they've gotten emails from Kathy, I mean, a lot of the department heads still work on Fridays, although the door may not be open, but it's more of our front-facing staff who are really getting the benefit. And the front-facing staff are really our, our lower-paid employees, and this is a benefit to attract them and to retain them.
Thank you. Counselor Irman?
Thank you. Yeah, I had similar questions for Administrator O'Malley. So if we were to extend the pilot, would we need to renegotiate that with the unions? And also, how many unions are there that would be affected?
I would have to speak to the unions, but I, in reality, I, I don't think it's fair to the unions to keep dangling this over them. If you're not gonna do it, just pull the Band-Aid off tonight and don't do it. If, if you're gonna extend it and make it permanent, make it permanent tonight. I would have to go back to the unions and say, well, this is again another temporary measure and we, whatever, the six or eight months or a year that Counselor Nagin said, I'd have to see what the union's response would be.
Thank you.
Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. This would be for Director Roy to start. How much income will we lose if we dropped the fees that we require people to pay using credit cards, things of that nature? I mean, that's probably a quick question on you, but is there a significant amount of money coming to the city?
So the fees do not come to the city. It goes right to the credit card company. So that's why we have the software and the devices free, because they receive the fee to cover those costs.
Right. So if we had to pay, eat the cost, like a vendor or a regular person in town, do you have any idea what kind of money we'd be losing?
I'd have to calculate that.
I mean, is it significant? I mean, you know, people who work in these departments, you're seeing all the good checkwriters of the world coming in to save the 3%. Are we using a lot of credit cards at the windows? I mean, I come in and use a credit card at the window, so personally, I have no issue with that. But I'm just, out of curiosity, that keeps coming up in different parts of the conversation is the fee. So I, you know, information I'd like to know.
So, just an example, we do have some companies that actually pay their taxes online with a credit card. So we would lose a lot of money due to the fact that if we just waive the fee and eat that portion, we would end up losing because everybody would start paying their taxes online because they wouldn't be getting that 2.5. And when the whole credit card started with all the municipalities, one city did that and after one year, they stopped because they lost a lot of revenue.
I sus, I suspected as much, and that's what I wanted to hear, thank you, because I think people don't understand that convenience sometime is the fact you're gonna have to pay that fee in the process. So I, I support this process. And I, I support it morale for people I've worked under a four-way, four-day work week, have people worked for me under a four-day work week. You know, staggering it, if there's a way to stagger it and we had the manpower, maybe I could be looked at this year's budget and we're already screaming that we're gonna be well over our head for that as far as that goes. And I, you know, I, unlike other wards, I guess, I only had three constituents who spoke out against it. Majority didn't have an issue with it, once they understood what was going on, maybe just my ward. Most of the, most of the people I heard were either heard from one of the Facebook things or from the deputy administrator who sent it forwarded to me. So I mean, I did see some people who did that, business owners in my area, you know, but I mean, to me personally, I'd only had three individuals. I talked to a lot of people, most, quite frankly, didn't care. You know, most said they used their credit card and go online, you know, for convenience in that standpoint. But I do believe that we're in a vicious cycle of trying to employ good people and be able to man our city up, as we already see in public works. And I don't believe for a second that being open on Friday is gonna get us any better people, quite frankly. I suspect we would lose people if you had an option. And everyone's doing it. I mean, Google how many cities in Maine? Twenty-seven. I got thirty-five who are doing, are offering some sort of system along that line. So I just think it's to our benefit to keep moving forward as we're trying to. We have a new city administrator coming in eventually here. And maybe, maybe six months from now, after this person's on board, they may turn around and say, you know what? My time in the community says this is not a good deal. Doesn't say we can't go back to five-day work weeks, okay? This is not written in stone, just like it's not written in stone, we're gonna give four-day work weeks for the rest of their career. I guess the question to the deputy administrator is, do we need to go out and make a contract change if we say yes today? Or are they gonna ride this out until a new contract, which would give us the ability to change back if we want to?
Well, I would have to get a side agreement with, with each union that it's affected because some of the collective bargaining agreements say Monday through Friday in a certain hours. And I just want to make sure that there's no misconception that these folks are not being paid any more money, but they're still working 37.5 hours. Now, we, you know, they're still in the building, they're still getting work done, as you heard Director Connor talk about, a lot of work is being done even if the doors aren't open. So I don't want, I, I don't know if the misconception in the community is, oh, well, they're getting paid the same amount and they only work four days. They're still working the same amount of hours, but they're putting those hours into four days. But I would have to approach the unions and say, okay, now that this is permanent, we need to do a side agreement on your collective bargaining agreements. And that would be MSEA Union and I think it's Protech. There's a couple of them that I would have to address.
But the side agreement would only be till their next contract comes under review, correct?
Well, those side agreements will continue into, let's see, into the next CBA.
So it's an automatic, so we'd have to negotiate it out if we did approve it?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Nagin?
So just one piece that, that was brought up. It is true that like, time is money, right? Especially when you're dealing with contractors and pieces like that. So again, you know, I've had an electrician that he was able to do a certain amount of the work and then couldn't come back for three months. And that happens sometimes, you know? So I think it's really important, again, that all of the processes that we have in place are easy. You know, they, again, there's a challenge to kind of the, the cliff that we're facing here, you know? It's like, you either have to make it permanent or, or you have to, if you have to, or you have to cancel it completely. I, I don't necessarily agree with that viewpoint because ultimately, there are complaints, legitimate complaints about the way that it's currently working. And so, unless there was some guarantee that those pieces could be remedied, I'm not comfortable with going completely, completely to, to a permanent, like, it, it doesn't say permanent until the new contracts come, it's permanent, right? And so like, it's gonna be an act of Congress again to, to, to move it back. So, you know, I, I favor the four-day work, work week for the employees. I think it's important for morale. I think it's very difficult right now to say, no, we're gonna go back to five days because it's going to damper morale in this building. People will, will definitely feel affected by that. But I don't think it's perfect right now. I do think that, that there's work that we could do to make it better. That's all.
Counselor Irman?
Thank you. This is just regarding the fees for doing business online. Just something to take into consideration, maybe that, I think Director Starr mentioned a dollar, a dollar fifty for, you know, per transaction, that fee, where it's a, you know, it's a small amount, but it's still, it, it's still, you know, is a change based on, based from coming into the building. Maybe that's something that we could cover as a municipality. As far as the percentages for credit card transactions, I'm totally fine with that staying the way it is. You know, a business might be able to cover those fees and they just raise their prices as a result, but if a municipality does that, we're basically shifting that cost from the people who choose to use a credit card to all taxpayers. So like, I pay my water bill with a check because I don't want to pay that fee. I drop it in the drop box also because I don't want to pay for a stamp because I'm, I'm just a half mile down the street. So maybe that's just something to consider as far as those smaller fees per transaction. Maybe we can cover that, but I'm totally fine with leaving the credit card as it is.
And just for the public's benefit here, you know, you are paying those fees when you're using them at our realit, at our retailers, you know, for instance, and grocery stores. You, they are built into the cost. Here, we're delineating them out, but you're certainly paying for it in the cost of goods that you purchase. Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We're spending a lot of time on fees and structures and online and so on. This really is a debate about whether or not City Hall should be open five days a week or four days a week. I've made my point that the constituents, the people who utilize the services at City Hall, who have spoken to me, are not happy with not having Friday access. I have not heard anybody say, yeah, it's great, I don't have to worry about going to City Hall on Friday. That, that's not a conversation I've had. I don't want to muddy the waters here, but I'm afraid I'm gonna have to because we talked about union negotiations and the schedule that I see in front of me. I mentioned earlier that previously, the public had access to City Hall 37 and a half hours a week, and that's been cut down by three hours to 34 and a half. The employees are being paid the same amount that they were being paid previously. However, according to the memo from Director Terrio, they are now being paid for a half-hour of break time, of lunchtime. So that's a half-hour of time that the employees are being paid that they're not available to utilize or to, to serve the public. That's a wrinkle that hasn't been discussed at all and it really shouldn't affect the decision. I'm all in favor of giving the employees as much as we possibly can, as much as we can afford. However, when it comes at the cost of reducing the services that are being provided to the public, the word I'm having is that that's not acceptable or not preferable. So I, again, I will vote against, oh, the other thing I wanted to make, I'm sorry, is the consistency. I've had quite a bit of experience in changing rules, and I'll draw an analogy here. When we change the rules about what's recyclable and what isn't, it takes years for the public to understand. We now are many months into this pilot project and the public still doesn't understand that City Hall is closed on Fridays. I would not like to extend this program. I would rather put it in place or preferably remove it because I think that consistency is very important. If we keep changing the rules and changing the time that, that City Hall is open, unless we become much more effective at communicating that to the, to the using public, we're just sowing confusion and discontent. So I would encourage us to either up or down this tonight, not extend it, and, and be much better about communicating what hours the City Hall, the city is open for business. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Nagin?
Just, just as a point for the, for the half-hour paid lunch, anytime you employ somebody for eight hours of continual work, you have to pay them for a half-an-hour lunch. And so, before, we weren't paying them.
So, yes, I, I- So, yes, I would argue that we are not, respectfully disagree that we are not reducing services. We are, yes, you cannot walk into the building on Friday, but now you can walk into the building, what, 45 minutes earlier, Administrator O'Malley, on the weekday?
Yes.
Yes. And so we have people who are saying like, I need Friday. But then if we, you know, vote this down tonight, we will have people who are saying like, hey, 7:45, early, I could, I could come in. I couldn't come in Friday, but I could come in now, like, earlier, before I start my day. And so I do think it takes, it takes time for people to adjust, and I think that's what we're seeing now. You know, way back, I'll just offer up, this is an analogy, way back when, doctors used to make house calls. And as soon as doctors decided that they wouldn't make house calls and you have to go visit the doctor's office, I'm pretty sure 100% of the patients would say that that was a reduction in services. They didn't like it. But in the end, they got care. And I would argue that, yes, perhaps it has, I would acknowledge that there are hardships to some residents that were used to coming in on Friday. And now they cannot. I would offer up later on Tuesday or early, earlier in the day, or early in the morning on the rest of the days, and then our online services. And the fact of the matter is, we attract and retain staff. And if there's nobody working here, then what's the point of all of this? I do think this is where, where, this is certainly where, you know, management and workforce is headed, certainly in the private sector. And as you can see from the list compiled by Director Terrio, this is where municipalities are headed to. Eventually, we will be the only municipality here in Maine that does not offer a four day work week, and we will be at an extreme competitive disadvantage. And I think this is just forward, forward looking. And I do agree with Counselor Nagy that we need to make, you know, huge strides in online services and services offered by a website. And I think we can, you know, continue to make that process or continue to make that progress. Further comments or questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Nagy?
The only thing I'll add is, again, the purpose of City Hall is to conserve, to serve the constituency. And we have to make a decision that benefits the constituents as well as encourages a competitive work environment and doesn't completely destroy the morale of the building right now. So I'm just going to, I'm going to put that forward again. Taking, taking the five day work week away at this moment, or sorry, the four day work week away at this moment, I think, would be, would be an ill choice. I'm just concerned about making it permanent because it is difficult to take back if it's decided that it's needed for some reason. That's all.
Counselor Sol?
I'd like to move the question.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the question has been moved. Please, yes, please call the vote.
Sure. So just for clarification, the motion is to move the previous question, which means that it will, if it passes, it'll stop debate and will go to the immediate main motion. So Counselor from Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Kind of irrelevant, but no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to one. A motion now before you, Mr. Mayor, is the main motion. Are you ready for the votes?
Please call the vote, yes, we are ready.
Counselor from Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
No.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to two.
What item are we on now?
We are on item number five.
Please, yes, item number five.
Item number five, by annual appointment of the registrar of voters, requested action to appoint City Clerk Kathleen Montello as the registrar of voters for a two-year term of office from January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Counselor Chinam, second by Counselor Herman. Do you need to cut things off, Madam Clerk?
It's basically a housekeeping item. If we had other items, it would have been on the consent agenda. It's required by state statutes every two years.
Gotcha. Discussion, comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Chinam?
Have all the applicants been received?
Yeah, yeah. There was only one, I don't know, it's surprising, yes.
I appreciate your sense of humor, Counselor Chinam. Further comments or questions or jokes from the council? Public comment for this agenda item?
Matt Roy, Ward Three. Traditionally, this is, why are we changing, why are we doing this in December, Madam Mayor? Because traditionally, this is done with the litany of certain assignments when a new council comes in and every, the first organization meeting in January. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, I trust your judgment.
So for clarification, it's, the dates are set in state statute. Sometimes we may have forgotten to put it on in December. It's every other year. It's not, it's not every year, it's every two years. If it is done in the first meeting in January, it's actually retroactive back to January 1st. So we're just trying to get ahead of the game this year, I guess.
And the way I see it, it's just one less agenda item for the next meeting.
There you go.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
We're now up to reports and updates from the council. Yes, Counselor Gland?
Senior Committee, we met this week, we now have a full complement of people. Thank you, everyone who rustled up people for us. We are going to meet in January and discuss a plan for our $10,000 grant moving forward and how we're going to do things. We'll probably come back to the council, I'm thinking in March, to give you guys an update.
Thank you. Counselor Chinam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went to the Auburn City Council workshop last night on Housing First. It was a most informative, very instructive workshop, and I'm encouraged by the progress that they're making. They are putting together a qualification statement to be reviewed by Main Housing. They have a project all lined up for a 30-bed housing on the lines of the Preble Street Logan House, is it called?
Yep.
I spoke with the chair of their Shelter Committee, and he indicates that he and our Shelter Committee have been in good communication. So I'm pleased to report that we're working on this in tandem rather than individually. And I'm encouraged by the progress that Auburn is making, which is not at all to diminish the progress that we are making.
Further reports and, Counselor Herman?
Thank you. The school committee met last night and just a few items. So there was a subcommittee on school safety that was suggested at the previous meeting that is moving forward. Some school committee members have been named to that, and there will also be, I believe, some community members and community representation on that. We also got a in-depth presentation on the nutrition program from the director, Director Roman. Just something to clarify for the public, it's interesting to note that our nutrition program isn't paid for at all with local funds, it's completely paid for with state and federal dollars. We also, let's see, oh, we recognized Ashley Medina, that was her last meeting last night as the Ward Five representative. And I also wanted to note, we recognized a student, Faduma Ahmed, for receiving a QuestBridge match scholarship. So she's part of the Bridge Program, which is, which is through LRTC. She's a student in their nursing program. And she is also earning college credits as part of that program. She'll be going, she'll be headed out of high school with over 30 college credits due to that, and she received a full four-year scholarship to Johns Hopkins University. And not just tuition and fees, but it covers housing and food and books and things like that. So, yeah, so very, very high achieving student there, and wish her the best as she goes to Johns Hopkins. That's all I've got.
Further reports and updates before we move to new business? We're now up to new business, should there be any? Counselor Gland?
I have a question for the city clerk on how applications are coming in for all of our jobs that we have opening or things?
Sure, our board and committee applications, they are, they're coming in, they're trickling in. Just as a reminder, we basically had two sets of applications or openings, I should say. One is the list of current vacancies. The committees already have vacancies and are starting to potentially see some quorum issues. So we advertised for those the first weekend in December. We traditionally advertise the first week in December for the January openings. We wanted those to have special focus, so we did advertise those the first week in December. The second week in December, we advertised the openings that are coming up and that will be open in January. We are seeing several folks reapplying for reappointment, which is great, experienced folks, but we certainly do have several committees where we haven't received any application yet. Those deadlines are the 30th, Monday, the 30th. And I honestly can't remember if it's noon or 4:00 PM, but Monday, the 30th. So applications are absolutely still being accepted for those openings. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Nagy?
So I actually have two points. The first one is just to address publicly the shooting that occurred this afternoon. I've said it before, but I want to reiterate, Lewiston cannot tolerate gun violence in our community. Absolutely cannot. If there's any support in which the elected officials can provide for the municipal officials, simply ask, that's one. And two, due to the fact that there is a heightened concern, and also it was on a very well-traveled public way, I think it may be helpful if we could have an agenda item, just to have an update on that particular shooting event in the next council meeting. It does not necessarily have to be from the chief, but from a representative of the police department, if that's possible. Could we, could we request that?
I could speak to the chief, but realize if it's an ongoing investigation, Counselor, other than what he's put out in a press release, he's not going to be able to share any other information with the city council.
Understood. But if there's more information to share, I would like that. The second piece is the workshop around trash. We've had two workshops around the bins, the RFID, well, not the RFID chips, but the haulers, the bins. And recently, it's come to my attention that because of the way that condos are set up and row houses, there is not the possibility of buying services from the city at all, even though the people own their establishments.
If I could interrupt you?
Yeah, sure.
My plan was to have a workshop on that, January 7th, but that has now changed, so I'm going to bump that to, I think, January 14th.
Okay.
So Kevin Gagnon and his staff from Public Works will be addressing, maybe making some changes to the ordinance regarding trash pickup in condos and what's the definition of a condo and if the condos are on private ways. As a whole, litany of things, it's not just a simple fix. So I just want all you folks to kind of get that from Kevin and his team at Public Works. So my plan is, was to do it on the 7th, but obviously, we have to do the TIF, so we'll do it probably the week after. On the 14th would be a workshop day.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, Counselor Chinam?
Thank you. A personal note, I serve on the Finance Committee. I believe I was appointed to the Finance Committee for a one-year term. Do I need to submit an application because that is a council position?
Right. So applications for council seats are not usually submitted. So my understanding, did you talk with them? Yes? Okay. So January 7th will be the first council meeting of the new year, and there will be several items that are traditionally, some of the items in the first city council meeting of the new year. And we will have the election of the city council president, because under the charter, that's now once a year instead of twice a year because we're in the middle of our transition. So it'll be election of city council president, election of city council representative to the school committee, and then appointments on all of the various boards and committees that counselors are representative on.
Okay.
It is staff's recommendation that normally the counselor would serve a two-year term in conjunction with their council term on, as a rep. So since we're in the middle of transition and things get a little choppy, it is staff's recommendation that we simply repeat and renew for one additional year, every council rep to every council boarding committee, because you would normally serve a two-year term anyway, you've served a one-year term, and it would be coming up on a two-year term. That's the staff's recommendation. We're planning to put it on the January 7th agenda. Certainly, we'll chat with the mayor and the council president, you know, if they have any other thoughts on that. But the council president seat and the school committee one are defined in charter as now annual.
Thank you, that's very clear. I'm continuing to be astounded at your grasp of all the minutia that it takes to run this city. I do have another question, and it's a frustration, and I need some guidance. The deputy administrator has already given me guidance on this, and I'd like to have that confirmed. I have been speaking with service providers in the needle exchange program here in Lewiston and on a one-on-one basis. It was recommended that I speak with the Public Health Committee, and I made an appointment. I spoke with the chairman of that, William Wallace, and was planning to go to the Public Health Committee last Thursday, I think was their meeting, but that has been tabled and rescheduled. It's a month out now, it's toward the end of January. I'm very much in favor of speaking with the Public Health Committee and trying to, getting their input and their ideas, but I would like permission, if I need permission, from somebody to proceed with trying to collaborate between the city and the service providers to address the question of needle waste. Mr. Administrator, can you guide me?
Is there particular groups that you want to meet, Counsel Chinam? You're free to do that. It's only if three of you meet that we would have to post that as a meeting. But if you're on your own, meeting with these folks, that you're welcome to it.
Well, let me ask you more pointedly. It is very clear that I do not direct staff, none of us do.
That is correct, sir.
However, one of the, one of the thoughts that I have is to offload some of the Public Works burden of collecting syringes from the Sharps boxes and perhaps adding more boxes. I would like to establish a dialogue or a collaboration between a needle provider and the Public Works Department. And I'm at a loss as to how to do that without going through lots of formal channels.
So is there a needle provider that you're?
Yes.
Having conversation with?
Yes.
You could direct that to Director Gagnon, then he could direct it to one of his staff that deal with that or oversee the needle collection?
And that's fine for me to do that.
That would be fine. I mean, I'm not saying it's going to happen.
Right, right.
But you can at least get the information to him so that his staff can make some recommendations.
My problem is that I'm not quite sure how to effect that conversation.
I would go through Director Gagnon, go through, and then he can let you know who on his staff. Sitting here, I would not know who oversees the needle collection. That's why I have a Public Works director.
Well, and I know that, but you are the boss of the Public Works director, so I'm asking your permission for me to talk with the director?
You don't have, go right ahead. You don't have to ask my permission to speak to the director.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Nagy?
I'm just realizing, I may want to reframe the way that I had requested the information from the police department. It's not necessarily about the particular shooting that just happened. In all honesty, it's only been one shooting, I think, since the presser, right? Or maybe there was, maybe there was another one, but it's been, there have been many less shootings overall. And I think maybe we just want an update on like, the programming that was suggested, and it doesn't necessarily have to be done on the 7th, it could be done on the 21st. We just want an update on, well, at least I do, want an update on the program specifics that were named, where they're at, what they're seeing, you know? Just as a, I think...
Yeah, that's a different request. I can speak to the police department.
Yeah, that, basically, I just want to put people's minds at ease and also, you know, find out how the police department's doing. Like, are there challenges they need to help with? Are they succeeding? You know what I mean? Like those pieces.
Ready for executive sessions, councilors? Counselor Chinam, did you have something?
Mr. Mayor, I move we enter executive session to discuss labor negotiations.
Sorry, if I, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the...
Oh.
Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to enter into executive sessions.
Item number eight, executive session to discuss labor negotiations regarding the mains association of police... Maine Association of Police Patrol Unit. Requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to Maine revised statutes annotated Title I, Section 405, 6D, to discuss labor negotiations regarding the Maine Association of Police Patrol Unit.
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Glant. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Lewiston. Good night. Ready, entering into executive sessions, we will not be back. Have a wonderful evening. And happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy Annika and Kwanzaa.